Hello, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Cunningham Township electorate to order. It is Monday, June 16th, 2025, and the time is now 6:33 PM. This is a special meeting of the township electorate, which means this is not a meeting of the elected officials of the township, but rather a meeting of the registered voters of the township. Attendees who are registered voters of the township are asked to please sign in on the sign-in sheet in the back of the room. Registered voters of the township this evening, you will be the ones making motions and voting on the business, so I will call out to the floor, asking for a motion and a second, and ultimately, a voice vote. Please state your first and last name when making a motion or second, so that we can record it in the meeting record. As a reminder, only registered voters who reside within Cunningham Township or the city limits of Urbana may make motions and vote this evening. All others may participate via public input. So, our first item on the agenda is the adoption of a public input guidelines. This body is allowed to adopt its own rules. As a suggestion, I have provided the City Council public input rules, because they are likely the ones everyone is most familiar with. Persons wishing to provide public input would have five minutes to speak. Can I get a motion to adopt the proposed public input guidelines?
Just my name when I'm making a motion?
First and last name, yes.
Nicole Muffet, and I motion to adopt the rules.
I second the motion.
Yes, for it to be recorded.
Esther Pat, I second the motion.
Okay, so, this motion by Nicole Muffet and seconded by Esther Pat to approve the proposed public input guidelines, is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adopting the proposed public input guidelines, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Okay, that item passes. The next item of business before us is the election and oath of a moderator. The moderator will act as the chair of this meeting and will take us through the remaining items of business on the agenda. The moderator must be a registered voter who resides within the township. We do have a basic script available to help the moderator if needed. May I please have a motion to nominate a moderator?
Speaking as a member of the electorate, I nominate Esther Pat as the moderator of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Hi there, everybody. My name is Ben Jocelyn. I live at 806 East Green Street, and I'm a member of the electorate. I second the motion to have Esther Pat be the moderator of this meeting.
Okay, so, the motion was made by Danielle Chenoweth and seconded by Ben Jocelyn to nominate Esther Pat to be nominator. Are there any further nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Esther Pat as moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. Esther, would you come over to the front, so we could administer the oath, and then can proceed with the remainder of the meeting?
Want me here, or there?
So, I, Esther Pat.
I, Esther Pat.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of moderator.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of moderator.
At this town meeting?
At this town meeting, to the best of my ability.
All right, and then, let's just sign this.
Would anyone like to address the town meeting? And if so, please walk up to the microphone and state your full name. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Do I have to ask that three times, or is that just, no? Okay. Last call, anyone want to speak? Oh, Sandra Otten, oh, I'm sorry, you say your name.
Okay, so, just wanted to put in my two cents about giving the township supervisor the okay to do what she needs to do, as far as helping alleviate homelessness in any way possible, including any leasing, renting. I think Danielle has proved herself as being a good steward of our money, and in reducing homelessness in Urbana, and I'd like to just see her empowered to continue that. Thank you. I'm Sandra Otten, 1902 Autumn Ridge Drive.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the town meeting?
Hi, my name is Janice Walker. I reside in Urbana, and I kind of want to ditto what the last respondent said, in that Danielle has proven herself a wonderful person, not only a wonderful person, but a caring constituent in this community. I work with homelessness through first followers. I see what they don't have, which is a roof over their head. No one can do anything without a roof over their head. We have people in our community who are suffering from mental health issues, physical issues, and how can they possibly address those things without a viable roof over their head? Please consider what Danielle wants to do for this community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the town board, or the town meeting? Hearing none, public participation is closed. Next on the agenda is reports of officers. Ms. Chenoweth.
I give my update at the town board meeting, which has followed this, and so I would just invite the public to stay for my update. I will be talking about some important updates about displaced residents in both Champaign, Urbana, the cloture of utility assistance in the community, the significant increase in food precarity in the community, and some of the things we're looking to address in the next year. So, you're certainly welcome to stay for the town board, but I will go ahead and get my presentation at that time.
Are there any other reports of officers? Ms. Chenoweth? All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number TA 2025-001-R, a resolution to delegate authority to the township board to purchase, sell, and lease property. Is there a motion from the floor? And if someone's planning on seconding it, if you want to follow up, you'll be next.
Todd Rusk, I move that the electorate approve and adopt the resolution to enable the township to execute the settlement as described.
Motion has been moved, and is there a second?
My name is Laura Haber, and I second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Yes, yes. Are there members, any members of the body who would like to address the motion on the floor?
Esther.
Oh, Ms. Chenoweth.
I think I'm probably best positioned to explain this. So, essentially, the resolution delegates authority, so the way township operates is as a direct democracy, and so the electorate meets every April to basically take votes on various motions and resolutions. The electorate can also put advisory referendum on the ballot, and you saw that last fall, there were two referen- on the ballot. I think we're limited to three total on the ballot. So, the electorate met in April, this resolution was not on the special, excuse me, on the annual meeting, was not on the annual meeting's agenda, because the board had removed it because of misunderstanding about whether this was needed. I was able to get legal clarification from our lawyers at the request of the board. I appreciate their due diligence on the matter, and then essentially, we have to have a special meeting to convey that. If you've been following township news, which I know you do on a daily basis, you might know that township has grown from three to 20 staff members in the supervisor's office. The assessor has a number of staff members as well, and so we're seeking either to expand on location or move to a new location. We've also received $700,000 pledge from the state of Illinois and DCEO funds to support homeless services that could go to the office or to shelter expansion. We'd like to do both, and so we're trying to figure out financially if we can basically add more units of housing for precariously housed individuals, as well as move our office, so that we can all be together again, because we're renting across. We own a 205, which is the size of a postage stamp, and then we rent at two other locations. So, because we need to move forward with due speed, I did ask for this special meeting, so that the electorate, you, thank you so much for coming, even though it's raining outside, could give the authority to the town board, and then each year at the annual meeting, we'll be asking for that authority to be given to the town board if needed in the future. But I certainly hope to have good and exciting news for the people of Urbana shortly. And also, you know, if anyone has questions, I think I'd be happy to answer questions about it.
And just, would you clarify the motion? This motion is not to purchase specific property, this is a motion giving you the authority, the town board, the authority and legal, the legal authority to do so in the future, and each of those would come up at a regular township meeting, right?
Correct, yes, the public will have another opportunity to give input to the town board, based on properties that we consider. As you know, with property acquisition, usually it's, you know, you don't declare upfront where you're thinking of considering moving, or the price will go up fivefold, because it's the public's money. So, we try to have discretion as we're looking for space. But if people have any ideas of where we should move, or apartments that we should consider, please feel free to call me.
Is there any other debate on the motion? If anyone else wants to speak, you can just come up to the microphone. No more debate, anyone? All right, then, we'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution Number TA 2025-001-R, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this motion carries. And with no further business before this town meeting, the meeting is adjourned.
All right. Good evening. The time is now 6:49 on Monday, June 16th. I'd like to call and order this meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wu.
That was me.
Trustee Wu. Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Hersi.
Here.
Trustee Colisetti. Trustee Colisetti. Trustee Bishop.
Here.
Trustee Wilkin.
Here.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Supervisor Chenoweth.
Present.
Assessor Awano.
Here.
All right. We will, next item is the item, I'm sorry, the next item is the approval of minutes from previous meeting held May 27th. Are there any corrections or anything to the meeting to be presented? All right, no minutes, seeing none, hearing none, minister will move on. Next item on the agenda, are there any additional additions or changes needed to the agenda?
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
I believe, was there no minutes in the packet this time? Okay, so, just on the topic of addition to the agenda, I wanted to let the town board know that we do, I did, went ahead and created a closed session on property impending litigation. Both of the items that we'll be discussing are the items we discussed at the last closed session, and I don't have additional information for you. So, I would advise that we remove that agenda item, so we don't have an additional closed session. But I wanted to leave it at your discretion, if you had questions you would like to discuss in closed session under those topics.
So, I need to make a motion to have that item removed, or, James?
I'll make a motion to remove that item.
Go for it. Yes, sir. Mr. Quisenberry?
I'll make a motion to remove item A under section eight, new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by James, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Hersi.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we will move on to public participation. So, the floor is now open for public participation. Please state your name before speaking. I mean, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. There no public participation? All right. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, councilpeople, my fellow citizens of Urbana. My name is Nicole Muffet, I'm a resident of the First Ward. I am also an economic sociologist, I study work and precarity. Last summer, I talked to the city council about how policing impacts the youth I work with at the Well Experience. Since then, I've been looking forward to being involved in the alternative to police task force, but a year later, the task force hasn't met, and Urbana continues to feel the pain of community violence, while we have limited say in how our communities are policed and cared for. In 2023, Chief Boone described crime as a disease. I feel differently. I see crime as a symptom, a symptom of a lack of community resources, a lack of reliable housing, a lack of productive activities for our youth, a lack of accessible physical and mental health care, a lack of affordable food, a lack of quality education, and a lack of good jobs, a lack of the things that help everyone lead a meaningful and positive life. This is how we prevent crime and heal our community. The Urbana Police Department has not filled several vacant positions, but will be seeking our community resources to fund more positions. Our community is broken, but more police is not the answer. When we view crimes as a symptom of this brokenness, we can see the police treat the symptoms, but not the causes. They may alleviate some of the pain for a short period of time, but without setting the bones of our brokenness, we will keep taking, treating, we will keep treating symptoms without knowing improvement over and over again. As you vote on our budget for the following year, I hope you consider the ways that we can alleviate the causes of crime, and not continue to police and harm our communities who are already experiencing that kind of violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public input? All right, seeing none. We will now move to the committee to verify bills. Will a member of the committee please report on the town fund?
Certainly. And just, just in terms of process, this is the town board meeting, and the next meeting will be a city council, and public participation is welcome either, but there will be another opportunity for public participation. The town bills report for this last month, in the town fund, we spent $170,343.04. I just had a note in the memo that this includes $98,996.58 to Carl as part of the tax settlement. So, it's larger than usual because of that. The general assistance fund, we had expenditures of $224,534.10 in that month. Total expenditures were $394,877.14. There's a list of all expenditures in the packet that the board and the public have access to, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the expenditures, and then I'll give an update from the supervisor's memo during the officer's report.
All right. Is there a motion to approve payment of the town fund bills?
So, moved.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it? Motion passes, all right. Will the committee please report on the general assistance fund?
Great, I can speak to, I think the motion I seconded was to confirm both the town fund and the general assistance fund, correct?
Well, I did, we did it individually, so.
Oh, okay. I already gave an update on the general assistance fund, but when we get to reports of officers, I will mention the memo.
All right. So, is there a motion to approve the general assistance fund? Go for it.
I'll move to approve the general assistance fund.
Second.
All right. Moved by James, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, all opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. All right. We will now hear reports from officers. Are there any officer reports to be presented at this time?
Yeah, I can give the supervisor's memo, and then if the assessor has a report. I'm going from the memo that is in the packet, which is available publicly online, and I'll just go team by team and give the top line highlights, because it's quite a long memo. But I do, from the general assistance team, we have seen the number of applicants going up. We tend to, summer is slow in Urbana for most people, but not for social services, because we see a reduction in hours and layoffs over the summer, so we tend to be much busier in the summer. We are, we do have a master of social work intern for the summer, and she, Cynthia, and she's welcoming, supporting us with policy and procedure updates. We have 92 active participants, and 18 of them are homeless, down from 21 in April. We are seeing, although Social Security Administration is kind of grinding to a halt, we actually had 19 people awarded social security disability this fiscal year to date, up from 10 last year. So, we did see a large number of folks approved, which is great news. We do have thirteen folks on our Housing First payments, where we pay their rent to keep them housed in subsidized housing. And we are part of, there's a spotlight this month on improving the social security disability application process, and we are the kind of local conveners to help people get on, get social security disability. And we were part of a statewide conversation, and there are photos from that and some information about the presentation. So that's our first team is our GA team. Our second team is our CARES team, which stands for Cunningham Township Assessment, Alternative Response, and Emergency Services. And essentially, we, I wanted to give you an update on the displaced residents. I won't dwell on Champagne Park Apartments, but will point you to the News Gazette article. There was also a Fox News segment tonight and a WCIA segment on that topic. I do want to talk about the residents in Urbana. We were working with fourteen households who were displaced, and we have basically everyone who had income or a voucher had, with the exception of one household, has an exit strategy. So we do expect everyone to be out of the hotel by the end of the month, and we do expect people to be rehoused at that time. We are using rapid rehousing funds from the state to do that, and that will help to give people a jump start. So it's a double deposit, first month's rent, first month's utilities, moving costs, food stock up, and, um, and housewares, including furniture. Many people lost their, the property was in such terrible condition that they lost all of their, many of their belongings. So using the state funds, we were able to replace that. So I'm excited about that. I think the displaced residents at Havens, from the Havenstone Apartments, it's not an ideal situation, but I feel pretty good about it because of the rapid rehousing dollars that we were able to receive that you approved at our last meeting. Champagne Park Apartments continues to be of great concern. It does impact Urbana because we are one community, and we do think that there are, you know, somewhere between sixty and a hundred homeless residents at that location, and that shelter remains full, and I was able to, to confirm that with the supervisor of the City of Champagne this afternoon. So essentially, we're also working with that group, group, but things have been a little bit more slow going in Champagne. I did want to show you that we were at almost nineteen hundred incoming calls for service last month. That's up from almost sixteen hundred calls for service the month before. And I have mentioned this before, but essentially, according to the Barry Dunn report, the police department in Urbana gets about sixteen hundred calls for service a month. So we are, you know, we are twenty full-time, full, we are twenty staff. They are eighty-five staff. We have nineteen hundred incoming calls for service. They have sixteen hundred. It's not a competition, but you do need to look at and compare the situation. The police serve a different role than township, and we can consider ourselves to be complementary. But that said, I really, we are like, the last time we were at nineteen hundred calls for service, it was the height of the pandemic, and we were like absolutely running wild. So, um, you know, at some, I, we need to figure out how we are going to handle that. And the answer to that problem is not going to be what other social service agencies have done in the community at times, which is stop answering the phone. We will continue to answer the phone, and we will continue to keep our doors open, and that is my promise while I am the supervisor. But I need help because that is a really intense number of calls for service. Rental assistance, we had forty-two applications received and processed last month, down from fifty-six. Just want to remind people, pre-pandemic, we were doing ten to twelve a month, so we are at like fifty on average per month. We are putting out about thirty thousand dollars in rental assistance a month. I am grateful that the City of Urbana is going to allocate this, has proposed to allocate CDBG money at about fifty-six thousand dollars a year to help with rental assistance. I really appreciate that. Utility assistance, I'm very concerned. LIHEAP is a very strong program in our community. RPC does an excellent job of running that program. There are, is the proposal on the table to cut LIHEAP. It will have devastating impacts on our community. The New York Times had a piece today that I appoint people to that looks at utility costs across the entire country and the political points of leverage to try to rein in some of those costs. Georgia was highlighted in the New York Times today. But essentially, what we do in Urbana, Cunningham Township is if someone cannot receive funds, if they are shut off or just about to be shut off, they live in Cunningham Township and they cannot receive funds through LIHEAP or other places, we do pay, and we require them to be on a payment plan. If they're not shut off, if they're shut off, they don't take payment plans. So we're seeing a lot of people coming in with huge bills where we can only pay up to about six hundred dollars, but their bill might be twelve hundred, and they have to pay down six hundred dollars before they get their power back on, and they are not allowed to do a payment plan once it's shut off. It's not a great situation. I do want to note in May, we paid forty-nine households to put their power back on. That is really huge. April was twelve. February was twelve. And I know, you know, in the winter months, if you go back up, it's smaller because they're not allowed. Amarin is not allowed to shut off in the winter. You know, September was eighty-seven that we paid. But I just want to point out, we basically, uh, we've been expending significant funds on utility assistance, and I'm concerned about that going forward. We had twenty bus passes and transportation assistance last month. In the street outreach, we are, um, you know, we're, we're, we were at, we, our capacity was thirty. We added staff. Our capacity went to sixty. We have seventy-nine in the program. Uh, school outreach, essentially, we received four additional family referrals, including eight children, and from USD, and we had two family referrals from Crisis Nursery. Housing and supportive services, we are supporting about a dozen houses, households to our seniors, for our families with children, to have disabling conditions, and we're helping them to try to find housing straight from homelessness. In our hotel program, we served thirty-three households representing forty-two individuals, up from our plan of twelve, so we've just been flexing that program, using angel donor funds primarily to do that. We did have somebody move into, we had basically three pieces of good news. We had three participant households moving out. In last month, we had somebody who had been denied five times due to eviction in her past, even though she had steady full-time employment, and she finally was approved for a unit in Champagne and transferred to our rapid rehousing program, so very excited for her. Our rapid rehousing program, we are at eleven, up from our planned capacity of ten. We do have an increase coming next year, so I'm excited that we'll be able to do additional rapid rehousing next year. I do want to mention, I always try to highlight how many families are literally homeless on our waitlist. We have seven teen families on our prioritization list. We really, as I've mentioned before, our goal is to be zero to one, right, at any given time, and we've been there before, but we are, we are not there now. I, uh, what families who are interested in being screened, who either had children enrolled in Urbana schools or at Crisis Nursery, they can go through Crisis Nursery if they're working with them, but since Urbana schools are closed, they can come directly to us and we'll do that screening. Our angel donor funds is primarily what is floating, the, some of the expansion of hotel stays. And we did receive this year to date about seventy-six thousand dollars, so that has been really helpful. And then we serve five homeless households with housewarming gifts to help them move into their housing, and we continue to run a help desk hosted on the second floor of the Urbana Free Library. It's open Tuesday afternoons from twelve to four and Thursday mornings from nine to one, and we can help people apply for any services provided by Cunningham Township, but also SNAP, Medicaid, and other things. And that is staffed by certified digital navigators who, who are former participants of ours, who are now working in the community paid for by us. Our food support, last year, last month, we served eighty households. It was a slight decrease from the previous month, but it's because one of our partners is closed for renovations, so we just haven't had as many meals that we've been able to provide folks. And then Solitary Gardens is going strong. It's a great program. We've got about seventy gardens across Champagne, Urbana. We are hosting an alternative, excuse me, we are hosting a de-escalation training for the Continuum of Service Providers for the Homeless, paid for by the Continuum of Service Providers for the Homeless, but Cunningham Township is organizing it, and that will be on Friday, and it's full. But I'm excited about that piece, and I want to continue to really be a leader in helping folks across Champagne, Urbana, and the county train in de-escalation and crisis response. And then in May, the very beginning of May, we hosted a luncheon learn centered around alternative crisis response models, where our social work intern presented on research done on models across the country. And we had a panel that included our Jay Colossetti as, in her capacity as the Executive Director of RACES, as well as Karen Sam, someone from, uh, public, someone from CTSO, and Joel Sanders, who's a former police officer in Urbana. And we did a Douglas community garden raising and strawberry picking, which was super fun. Did a lot of shoveling dirt. And Douglas Park has been a little bit quiet this last year, but there's a lot of volunteers coming together to kind of raise that garden, and it will be a come and eat garden. So if people see things at Douglas Park, they can come and eat. They don't have to ask questions. They don't have to sign any forms. They don't have to do income verification. They can just come and eat. So we're excited about that. We also did an Aspen Court Schools Out Cookout. That was May thirty-first. And that cookout was in partnership with Urbana Park District's Urbana. And we are really trying hard to work with Aspen Court to seed a garden there. I've asked the mayor to participate in some conversations with the, um, with the owners or property managers, but they had designated a place for a garden, and the sun grant from the City of Urbana was to pay for a shed for tools, but there's a little bit of, um, I'd like to get to a written agreement with Aspen Court so that there is stability with that garden. But we went ahead and had a Schools Out Cookout in an area of the community that has a lot of precarity, and it was really fun and great, and we appreciate the mayor for coming out and for the community coming out on that. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the supervisor's memo.
Any questions for Township Supervisor Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for all the updates and the work that you and your team are doing. Also, just a reminder to us as town board and mayor and our other capacity that we had also talked about updating the relocation ordinance, and appreciate any collaboration on that. Understand it's probably not one of our first urgent things on the burners, but just a reminder that we're still interested in that and also seeking more preemptive and collaborative code enforcement so we can prevent some of this displacement in the future. And potentially the idea of, you know, what are we going to do with these old buildings? And do we have any leverage as a city against these landlords in potentially acquiring, renovating, and utilizing them when we're talking about affordable housing? But my question in there was about the meeting, was the information about alternative crisis models? I was unfortunately not able to attend that in person. I didn't know if there was a recording or a report for myself and possibly others who weren't able to attend and would like to still get the information.
Absolutely. Yeah, I can send a PowerPoint presentation to the town board, and I know it's in the queue to be posted on our website, but it's the end of the year, so my guess is it's not there yet, but I can send it to you directly, and it will be at ctso.org. I do also want to just answer to the tenant relocation ordinance, which Esther had, if she's still with us, and myself authored a number of years ago, really does need to be updated for the circumstances that we're seeing. So I welcome a conversation. I've asked Esther to participate in that, and if we could sit down and look at how we could beef up that ordinance, I think that would be great. And then with code enforcement, I would, um, really like the township to know when buildings are slipping, so when they get to that seat raid or there's been some issues. And also just, um, have a, a method to more proactively do code enforcement. In the case of Havenstone, it was the police department during a call for service that really discovered the condition of the property, but with our rental registration program and with proactive code enforcement, which has really been our, like, our, Urbana's methodology, which I'm very proud of because communities don't have it. I think we're going to have to really, you know, ask the community to report to us when they see, you know, spaghetti coming out of the, what is it, the extension cords coming out of people's windows, or it looks like something is really run down. I think sometimes the community thinks rightfully so, because this happens, that if they report a problem, then those tenants might be forcibly relocated. So I think that those two things have to go together, the tenant relocation ordinance, and really having like very solid support for folks in addition to like proactive code enforcement and asking the community to help us identify properties before they get to the point where Havenstone got to. And then there's some things we're dealing with. There was a fire at Aspen Court, and there has been some displacement there, but it's been hard to get information about what happened. But we are working with two different residents who said that they were displaced. So I'm trying to get more information. I'll certainly let the, the city know when I have that.
All right, and I will let, Grace, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
Oh, just second.
Go for it, go for it.
Um, my other question, if you could just confirm from my memory, it seems like we had a very unfortunate inadvertent case study here locally with some of the apartments that were closed along that same line, that there was a wave of apartment closures in the winter. Was it January, February-ish? And unfortunately, there wasn't a very good handoff there, and people's needs weren't met, and there was criminal activity, and some people were kicked out of the hotel stay. And then we had a second wave of similar apartment closures where there was a better handoff and people's needs were met, and they were put into programming or outlooks for more permanent housing, that there were none of those issues. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it actually, this is, if, we need to probably publish that case study because what happens is that people will criminalize people's response to desperate situations. And what happened in the winter is that people, there was a fire, and folks didn't have their needs met, and there was a lot of behavioral issues in the hotel. And the second time around, you know, the township was like, please, city, let folks come through township to, we have a program. It's really established. It's very stable. I'm not saying there aren't issues, but there, it's rare that there are issues. We have a really solid. Our team is all trained in de-escalation. We know how to establish relationships with folks and meet their needs. They trust us. And so the second time, we had them come through township, we actually paid in advance and, and got reimbursed from the city. That reimbursement happened. It's a very clean process. And as a result, we, we did have, out of fourteen, we had two, one or two unplanned exits, whereas before, all of the residents, but one had unplanned, what we call unplanned exits, where there was behavior issues. So I really think this is exactly what we're talking about when we talk about having alternative response, is that we need to look at meeting people's needs and see if the behavior changes. And I think first followers in the audience and many other folks who work with folks who are returning residents and returning citizens, people who are dealing with poverty, addiction, et cetera, what we know is you give respect, I tell our team, you give respect, you get respect. You give respect, you get respect. Right? And so it's very important, and respect is not enough. We have to meet people's material needs. So I really am looking forward to the next period of collaboration with the city, with Mayor Williams, and with the council and town board on really looking how we can continue this collaboration so that, you know, the, it was unfortunate that Havenstone properties were unfit, declared unfit for human habitation. But the way we handled it was very smooth, and I think people had their needs met, and in some cases, in many cases, they're in much better situations now than they were. And we were able to do in-depth investigation. And we are able to invest additional resources, and I'm really proud of that collaboration.
Thank you.
I, was there any other question? I was going to tell you that I did actually end up meeting with Sarita out at Aspen Court, so we were going to have a follow-up, because I think that we're going to be able to bring a fun event, you know, to some of the young folks out there, but we're going to partner with Champaign. I will talk about it, but we did meet just, you know, to put that out there, so.
I really appreciate when there are meetings that I don't have to go to, so thank you, Mayor Williams, I appreciate that.
Yep, no, no problem. What you got, Sharice?
The question I have is, because we seem to be picking up the slack that, from the Champaign Apartments. So exactly, could you tell me what is Champaign doing?
Well, there's two parts to that question, so one might be, you know, why the heck are we working in Champaign? And I just want to clarify that Township levy only serves Township residents, but we have other funding sources like the Housing and Homelessness Solutions Grant and the state grants, which are for the county as a whole, and we are exclusively using those funds to support Champaign Park Apartments. Without that second fund, we could, like, meet with people and say nice things to them, but we wouldn't have any rental assistance to get them into housing. So that IGA that you approved is really important to that piece. The City of Champaign Township had the funds to relocate folks, but they didn't have the staff. And so with our staff and their funds, we basically, the IGA brings the funds over to Cunningham Township to do that, and that's where those dollars came from. I will say the City of Champaign Human Rights and Equity Office has done some canvassing, but I will say time and again, you can't do much if you don't have money in your hands. You mean, like, you can go talk to people all you want, but if you don't have funding to help people with their basic needs, it's a little bit smoke. Right? And so, like, we need to be thinking about emergency funds in both cities. We need to think about what happens, and I, you know, I have a good relationship with the fire department here, they call me, they called recently about a senior citizen situation that required adult protective services. I sent all the information over about how to call adult protective services and what resources we could provide. But I think it's really important when there are emergency responders dispatched, medical, fire, police, street outreach services, all of them, they need money in hand to be able to say, oh, you need, I see you don't have shoes on, you know, I see you don't have clothing, I see you don't have, you know, you just stole diapers from the store, do you need diapers? You just stole food, baby formula, seems like you need baby formula, how can we get you baby formula sustainably from public health? And not criminalize those behaviors, understanding that they're survival strategies to meet needs. So that's, that is what we are doing, and that's what City of Champaign and City of Champaign Township is doing. I would like to see the City of Champaign do more, I don't think, I mean, I think they're pretty aware that I feel that way, having had multiple conversations with them. I think they could do a lot more, and I was surprised at how there was no investment in the residents for the last year and a half while those properties have degraded, and I shared that with them and their leadership.
So when you are helping to rehouse, especially that, because that's a, how many people? Like 100 people?
In Champaign Park Apartments, we believe to be about 100. We're working with 28 households, which represent, which is up from the last time we spoke, is almost double. I think it represents about 35 people.
So are you, you're rehousing or helping to rehouse them in Champaign, in Urbana, in Savoy?
Actually, our, yeah, I'm sorry, our H funds can be used to rehouse anywhere.
Okay.
So if they want to rehouse in a different community, they can. This is the community of everyone we've spoken to, they're from here, and they all have elected to rehouse here.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Are there any other questions for our Township Supervisor? All right. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Oh, I'm so sorry, go for it.
So I believe we might be having technical difficulties with the trustees calling in?
I think they are on now.
Are they on? Okay.
Jaya? Jaya? How about Mary Alice? Or not? I definitely got worried that day.
Mary Alice has said that they're both on via text, but we're not hearing them, so...
If we could take a brief five-minute recess, maybe we can restart the system and resolve the issues?
Do I need to make a motion, or do I have someone make a motion for recess?
Are we pretty close to finishing?
We are. So I, yeah, let's, yeah, we can just keep going.
Take a recess between...
That's true. Yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion for a quick five-minute recess.
I moved that. Okay.
Made by Chandra, seconded by Sharice, I'm sorry. We'll be right back.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
They got the books.
Oh, Dan.
Dan, yeah. Dan, have we read this? Yeah, he told me that. I was trying to figure out who else could sign which. I'll probably just get the universe out. So I know there's a tracker, I'm just saying. So he did confirm that. He did confirm that. Maybe I can trace, check him down. He cuts the tracks Wednesday evening, Thursday morning, so we're doing it on Tuesday, it's worked out well. I'll just have to remember to get reimbursed, just forgetting it like I just said. Terrible. I feel safer already. The thing was about the resolution, though, I don't know what the details were.
Testing. Jaya, can you hear us now?
She's seven. Can you hear us? Jaya, Mary Alice?
Hello?
Are you there? We can hear you.
Mary Alice? And Jaya?
Yes. We're in business. All right. Yeah, right. Talk about perfect timing. All right. Now seriously this time, we will move to unfinished business, and my mic is really hot. Now, all right, they fixed it. Can you all hear me? No? How about now?
Testing.
Is it just, no, there we go. I think we're, there we go. All right, now seriously, seriously, this time, we now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Next item is Resolution Number T 2025-06-007R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the new Lincoln Square LLC.
That door closed.
How about now? That better? How about now? That better? No? Y'all making me earn this first 30 days. How about now? All right, we're going to move on, all right? The next item is Resolution Number T 2025-06-007R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the new Lincoln Square LLC for use as space for the Township Assessor. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Chandra, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
I just have a question.
Grace?
And we just clarified, because now after the Town Board electorate, now we're all good for the Town Board to approve things like this moving on. Awesome, thank you, that was all.
All right. Motion by Chandra, seconded by Grace. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is adopted. All right. Next item is Resolution Number T 2025-06-008R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor and/or Township Assessor to execute a settlement agreement with Presence Central and Suburban Hospitals Network, and an intergovernmental agreement with various taxing districts related to the settlement agreement. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
All right, moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Is there any discussion?
Just two sentences since we've been over this. This represents what I believe to be the last, the, like, old-school tax settlements. This one is with Presence, which is no longer in our community, they sold to OSF, but they retained the debt, maybe because they thought they could collect on it, which they're doing now, or the tax issue, the tax issue, litigation issue. The amount that we are settling at is, the Township will pay, is $226,722.91. We've also, we've already made several payments to Carl Hospital, so we're hoping to stop the bleed soon.
Thank you for that information. All right, that motion was passed, was presented by Chandra, seconded by James. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. With no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned. We will now go directly into the Committee of the Whole Public Hearing Meeting, that will be chaired by Mr. Quisenberry. Thank you all.
All right, I will call to order this meeting of the City of Urbana's City Council Committee of the Whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu? Councilmember Wu?
I think they can't hear us now, but it sounds like the mics are back.
Yep.
Testing. Councilmember Wu? Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hersi?
Here.
Councilmember Colossetti? Councilmember Colossetti? Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams? Present.
Okay, I'm going to take a moment, we need, we need our councilmembers online to be able to communicate with us, so can we...
Jaya, you still there?
Yeah, can you hear us now?
Okay. Can you hear me? I can hear you totally fine.
Yeah, I couldn't hear anything for a while.
So we can call, count you both as present? Mary Alice, are you present?
Yeah, it was just dead, and I was like, oh, look, my phone's still running. For you? I called in, and then I was, like, on hold for a really long time, and I texted several people, and finally Elizabeth went downstairs.
Can you ladies hear us?
Were you always listening to the meetings?
Yeah, I was in the hole.
Mary Alice, can you hear us? It's no fun. All right, Mary Alice, can you hear us now? Jaya, can you hear us? We may need to try whatever we did to reset the system again.
I moved that, what, we'd take another eight-minute break? I'm not sure how long it would take, this is a sound issue, so...
Can I, well, we're not, we're not completely called to order, because our people who are participating were not able to say they were present.
Yeah.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
I hear, I, yes.
So Jaya, are you there?
This is Jaya, yes.
Mary Alice, are you there?
Yes.
All right, we got everybody. Now we can, now we can do the hard part. All right, so, um, uh, first order of business is approval of the minutes from May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five from the Committee of the Whole on that date. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
We're, we're doing the, uh, public hearing?
Oh, we're in the public hearing?
Yes.
Then why, oh, that's for the Committee of the Whole? Sorry. Okay, I am, I don't have that agenda in front of me, just one second. Thank you. All right. Now I'll read the, I'll read the notice, which I should have done before we did the call to order. Notice is hereby given that the proposed annual budget for the City of Urbana in the County of Champagne, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six is on file and conveniently available for public inspection on the city's website. I'm not gonna read the URL, you can look it up in Google. Notice is further given that a public hearing on said proposed annual budget will be held at seven PM on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Estimated revenues for the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six are seventy-eight point four million dollars and estimated expenditures are ninety-three point four million dollars. All interested persons are invited to attend in person or to watch the hearing on UP TV or livestream. The hearing at, uh, the Urbana website. Persons attending the hearing shall have the right to provide written oral comments and suggestions regarding the proposal, the proposed annual budget. So we have, had the call to order and now is time for, uh, public input at this public hearing.
Good evening. I know I've already spoken too much this evening, but this is my third meeting and I'm going home to eat. I am speaking as a resident of Urbana as a Cunningham Township Supervisor, as the Vice Chair of the Continuum of Service Providers of the Homeless, as a Board Chair of CU Public Health. And as someone who is organized in this community and knocked on almost every single door in Urbana, I believe that this last election, the voters were extremely clear. They resoundingly supported the position, get a recommendation from the Alternative Response Task Force and fill the vacant police positions before you hire more police officers. I believe that the budget that increases, um, the police, uh, budget by another eight hundred and four, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars is premature and should wait until we have the Alternative Response Task Force recommendation. I do appreciate the, uh, investment in alternative response. I appreciate a number of the pieces of the budget and I appreciate all the work that goes into making a budget. But I do want to point out that three hundred thousand dollars for alternative response compared to just the increase of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand in police alone, when two-thirds of calls at least are nonviolent and noncriminal, according to the city's own Barry Dunn Report, really asks the question, are we giving the resources where they need to be to do the work? Your proposal, the proposal before you represents a seventy-one percent increase in the police budget over six years. There is no other department that has even come close to getting that kind of increase. This comes at a time when crime is at an all-time low, but material precarity is at an all-time high, which I shared in the last meeting. I do want to also point out that, um, I know that the grocery tax, uh, one percent grocery tax is, according to the financial forecast, one of the ways in which this would be paid for. It is a continuation, um, from state to local, but the governor has suggested the local governments not, um, increase the grocery tax, but actually give that relief to residents. But I do want to point out that the memo that supports the grocery tax is absurd. And this is why it says that it will cost one dollar and sixty-four cents per year for the lowest-income residents. Think about that. One percent means that they would be, a person would be buying only a hundred and sixty-four dollars in groceries a year. So it is like a weird fuzzy math. And I want you to really think about, just use common sense, but also Google or AI, which tells you that essentially a family of four spends about sixteen thousand dollars annually on, uh, groceries. Um, and so that would come to a hundred and sixty-four dollars a year in just that one cent grocery tax. So I think that if we were to consider, um, keeping the grocery tax, it really needs to address people's material needs and no other purpose. Otherwise, I don't think it's appropriate, um, to continue with that grocery tax. I do look forward to, um, discussing how we work together to address, um, the public safety concerns in our community. And I think that, um, as Martell Miller has said many times, you can't police your way out of poverty. It's really important, um, that we look at addressing poverty through real solutions that have to do with money that goes to support people and, and to support social workers and those trained in working with low-income residents who are struggling and all residents who may be struggling with substance abuse, mental health, and other forms of precarity. And I certainly appreciate your service and your time. I know it's a difficult decision before you. And I respect the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and you have five minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Sharon Irish. I've lived in Urbana for forty-five years. I speak for myself, but I'm a volunteer with the CU Reparations Coalition as well as some other youth development projects in town. I skimmed the first third of the budget document. The proposed budget for FY twenty-twenty-six aligns with many of my priorities and I appreciate the really hard work that you've done to get us to this point. The past and present harms to Black people in housing, education, healthcare, public safety, economic development, and cultural preservation demand acknowledgement and repair. I appreciate the proposed budgeting of twenty-five thousand dollars to support the creation of the Champagne County Reparations Commission for African-Americans, which together with other government units, hopefully, will be an action-oriented effort to implement tangible and meaningful steps toward repair and healing. My recent research on racial equity in local housing indicates that disparities in homeownership between white and Black people have, of course, historical roots in persistent discrimination at every level, including policies and practices by some banks, developers, realtors, neighborhood associations, landlords, and city governments. The most recent data show that the homeownership rate in Champagne County for white people is eighty-four percent, whereas for Black people it is six percent. Six percent. This ownership gap explains much of the current and growing income and wealth disparity among households in our county because owning a home is a key way of transferring wealth from generation to generation. Further regarding housing, as Danielle was talking about, we know how crucial safe and stable quality shelter is for children and lack of adequate housing is linked to a long list of dire outcomes for children in terms of physical and mental health. The National League of Cities reports that in addition to higher rates of asthma and infections, quote, homelessness is linked to developmental delays in young children, end quote. Emergency housing for families is practically nonexistent here despite dedicated efforts of folks in the Township Office and nonprofit organizations. The current viciousness of the federal government makes housing our most vulnerable people even more difficult. So I applaud efforts to create and maintain housing that is truly affordable for those of no to low to moderate incomes. These efforts may include increased reasonable code enforcement and altered zoning ordinance to accommodate more well-managed multifamily housing, which I support. I encourage development of the Alternative Response Task Force, which is a big lift given the time and energy commitments involved. Still, the public safety and well-being strategic area goals point toward the importance of broadening response options beyond police who have a different remit. That said, the budget can only be stretched so far. I urge you to prioritize broadening public safety response options, putting funds toward those options rather than increasing the department for the police budget. I remain skeptical about implementing the community engagement team within the police department and would encourage us to, as Danielle said, follow up with the vacant positions and the alternative response options. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, please state your name and you have five minutes.
Was who addressed? Paul Muth, uh, walked over from my place in Urbana on Illinois Street. I'll say what she said and what she said. That's great. I'll, I could just say that, I guess. But I want to reprise a contribution I made to a prior discussion of additional police staffing. And it was, I actually played an NPR report to the microphone on, uh, what Minneapolis was doing with an emphasis on crisis intervention, the alternative, um, um, response models and, and actually putting a lot of that and, and not having it in the police department. One of the teachings that happened at the IMC had a, a police guy from Dayton, I believe it was, saying that you can't put the alternative response system inside the police. It's, it's antithetical. That was Dayton Police Chief. One thing that stuck out with me and I highlighted the second time I intervened on the previous discussion was that they also asked for emotional support and counseling staff person. That's the only person I would, uh, like to see added to the staff department, to the police department, it seems to me. It is a difficult, stressful job and, uh, there should be no stigma for asking for help. And maybe it would keep more people on the job with, uh, less, less time off because of, you know, problems that develop. They could also intervene with the warrior cop syndrome, which I don't know of any examples of that in Urbana. I know that through the decade, through the last decade or so, there've been a couple of instances of these macho cop types in Champagne. I can't remember their names right now. Somebody here probably knows because it was pretty amazing. Where's the clock at? There. So, you know, I, I don't know how much discussion of that there is and whether, how much there needs to be in Urbana. But, uh, I, I also wanted to highlight the, the crisis intervention program that Memphis actually had. It was exemplary program. I don't know where the training is happening for, for Champagne police and Urbana police and the Sheriff's Department, but, but, um, they weren't getting very good advice. There was an example a while back of a, uh, deputy in the Champagne Sheriff's Department intervening and it was lauded as some kind of exemplary act of crisis intervention. I don't remember if people recall this instance. Guy was having an emotional crisis. He was on the edge of homelessness. He was on Main Street. He wouldn't leave the street. He was wielding a knife. And the, uh, crisis intervention was drop the knife, drop the knife, drop the knife repeatedly. No other attempt to, to try to connect with this guy who was clearly... So I'm, I'm just asking that that be taken seriously and that not be regarded as a good example of, uh, crisis intervention. So, uh, I guess I should yield back my time. With all, the deluge of stuff that's been going on, including the incidents in, in Minnesota, it's been hard to collect my thoughts. But I appreciate, um, any attention you can give this. Again, the takeaway is, uh, authentic alternative response and, um, crisis intervention emphasis. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, I'm Adam Nichols. Uh, I'm a resident of Urbana. I live on McHenry Street. And I wanted to urge the City Council to not reinstate the grocery tax that we finally got relief from, from the state. And then we hear that it's delayed and it's not gonna happen in twenty-twenty-five and we're all disappointed. But now twenty-twenty-six is just around the corner. We're being, you know, beaten down by inflation, which is not your fault, but it is something that we're dealing with. And groceries are even more expensive than what inflation shows. And, uh, the people could just use some relief. This is what your constituents want. This is how we want you to vote. And according to the budget, it brought in a million dollars or is expected to bring in a million dollars. Last year, we brought in more than a million dollars than we spent. It was, I think, about four million dollars more, um, in surplus. Which kind of brings me to my next point. This is, uh, just amazing. Last year, we actually spent fifty-nine point nine million dollars. This budget, we want to spend, we want to propose ninety-three point four million dollars. That's thirty-three and a half million dollars more than we spent last year. Like, what's going on? Like, where, where's the money going? That's twenty-five hundred dollars plus per household. We're not seeing our taxes go down. We're not seeing our roads be fixed. When someone calls the ambulance, they still get a, you know, several thousand-dollar bill. And it's not like that's free. So my basic question is just, where's the money going? Thank you.
Hi there, Committee Whole. Uh, my name's Ben Jocelyn. I'm a resident of, uh, Urbana. I'm here because I first would, uh, want to just point out that we've been sort of coming up here every budget cycle for well over a decade, pointing out the racial disparity that continues to happen in our jail system. And, uh, we continue to have, uh, sort of no metrics to evaluate our police force based on that sort of metric. I think it'd be really great if every year, uh, the city evaluated its police force based on, uh, the equity of arrests. I think that, or I saw something about, uh, the, uh, point that, uh, performance in school often leads, or poor performance in school is one of the leading indicators of criminality later in life or at least being incarcerated later in life. Uh, I applaud the police department for, for noticing this fact. I think it would be a woeful, uh, misallocation of funds if we put any money of our education or of our city budget towards having our police educate children. They're incredibly expensive to have police officers and they're not trained to be educators. That's simply a misallocation of, of city funds. And I can't think of a much faster way to send funds out of our city. Our police officers cost a lot of money and many of them don't live here. I think it'd be so much better if we invested in community members who have, uh, underemployment, who have needs to come and teach the students, uh, in their community. I think that we could start a program for the amount of money that we're looking at that would be way better for the kids, keep our money here, support our community and be, uh, paying for folks who are better educated or at least more qualified to be educators than the police. So I agree with that concern, but I don't agree with any money going to that at all. I want to point out that our police have been, uh, sort of advocating for license plate readers. I want to point out that that technology has been used to, uh, identify and chase down women who are seeking proper and, and appropriate, uh, healthcare for themselves in other states. That it's been used to track down, uh, folks who don't have documentation and are being chased from other states. And that surveillance technology that's being pushed for our private police department is, uh, being used to incarcerate members of our community and folks from out of state in a way that we do not want. So I applaud you all for holding that line to the best of your ability. I hope you continue to do so as the state tries to push it on us. And I think that it shows that our community is right to be skeptical of this kind of technology. And I think that it doesn't show good faith actions on our police department as they continue to push for stuff that our community has repeatedly said that it does not want. I want to talk quickly, uh, yeah, and just say, uh, we're already paying like four hundred and forty dollars per person and way more than that per taxpayer for our police department. It's seen increases, uh, unlike any other part of our department. And, uh, as the Township Supervisor was saying, it's, uh, we got as many or more calls to the Township, uh, for help. And I think it'd be great if we, uh, stopped or, uh, cut funding in the police department as we look at allocating to the, to the needs that we know cause criminality and cause people to, to do crimes of need. And so I want as much as we can to be funding, uh, ways to get people housing, jobs, the resources that they need to be successful, uh, members of our community, instead of spending more money on our police department, which we unfortunately need to come and say, please don't, every year as they continue to ask for more every year and that feels like a waste of all of our time. So, uh, thank you very much for representing our city and I hope you have a lovely rest of your day.
Deborah Hollenberg of Cottage Grove, South End.
Deborah Hollenberg of Cottage Grove, South End. I didn't have much time to prepare, so I'll try and be clear with my words. The city proposes to add an estimated $1 million grocery tax to pay for the extra police officers. This grocery tax would be a huge burden for low income residents, including myself, who are already experiencing rising food costs, which are expected to get worse. PBS News recently had an excellent article about this. I can email that if needed. 25% of Urbana residents live below the poverty line, and the median household income is only $45,000, which is nothing these days. Food stamps don't last the whole month. Mine ran out halfway through last time. And I get more than most people. And every food pantry is overwhelmed with need. I've been stuck behind traffic jams on Lincoln Avenue because of the Hope Center being overrun. Times are tough and getting worse. We need to be working to ease this burden instead of taxing people more. This request is coming at a time when the city is losing critical federal funds for, among other things, the housing support, as Danielle wonderfully outlined. These cuts are expected in other essential community programs, and I assume the city is planning to subsidize those should that happen. One of the things that I do love most about Urbana in the 11 years I've been here is how well we do care for our people by funding programs that address these essential needs. As living expenses continue to rise and needs increase, we must respond by expanding these programs wherever possible. Chief Boone has noted that the Urbana Police Department has a serious retention problem. There's currently eight budgeted but unfilled positions, four of which were added last year. The city repeatedly adds to the department budget to hire officers and incentivize employment, but clearly the problem persists, and repeating this failed strategy is a big mistake. Instead, we should implement the alternative response model that our Community Council has proposed previously, to reduce the burden on our officers and make the job more appealing to applicants. Other cities that have implemented these programs outside of police have been wildly successful. We are asking you to do the job we elected you to do and uphold the promises you made, and what we have made clear that we want in our community. We voted you into your seat, and we can replace you. This proposed budget aims to bring back a previously canceled tax to fund the Police Department expansion. There are existing funds already available to fill these officer positions, and the department has not used these funds. Why do we need to give them more? Our community is probably going to see cuts to federal funding. Continually adding to the Police Budget has not resolved the officer retention issue. Instead of raising our taxes to repeat a failed strategy, we need to adopt the alternative response model that the community has been demanding for years. What is the holdup? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sean Womack. I live in Urbana. I'm currently a member on the Community Development Commission, recently appointed. I am here in my personal capacity, however. I am here to give my support for the grocery tax proposal with some added clarities and changes. As the previous person mentioned, the targeting of the, like, the low-income people in our communities, it does add burden onto them. So, if we generate revenue from this tax, I would like to see that kind of alleviated in other benefits such as like SNAP. And I am unfamiliar with them, because I do not use them, but any alleviation that we can give there to kind of shift that burden would be great. But we, in recent weeks, I've learned of potential, any loss to funding that we could face as our city, since we have a pretty big target on our back, based on our location, our university, and us being a sanctuary city. I would also like to see a portion of this tax possibly going towards targeting and reinforcing areas and people of the city that are in dire need of help, and mainly our homeless population, supporting them from the ground up instead of the top-down, as opposed in like, police budgets and addressing problems once they arise, instead of treating things before they can become a problem. All of this could have meaningful impact and equity and lasting success in our community and these people's lives. And helping our neighbor out, and when they fall into crises, and getting, and helping them get back on their feet would not just benefit them, but all of us. So, thank you for all that you guys do, so.
Hi, I'm Sandra Otten, and my husband and I own Elliott Counseling Group. It was the 2001 Philo Road. So, we made a big investment right before the pandemic hit. We had an office already in Champaign, but we wanted to expand into Urbana, and we put a lot of money into an office there. And then the pandemic hit, and we didn't need two offices anymore. But I decided to stay in Urbana despite the fact that I had a lot of naysayers, thinking that that's a dangerous part of Urbana to be in. I like to say, it's not dangerous for me. It's usually dangerous for young black men. That's who it's dangerous for. And it's partly because they need services, and they need code enforcement there. There's a lot of things that that corner of Urbana needs, but a police substation is not one of them. It is not. They need social workers. They need jobs. They need sidewalks. They need trash cans, which seems basic, but seriously, there is no, you know, they overflow our trash can, because they don't have a place to bring their trash, or whatever. We put out a, you know, a basketball hoop, and it gets used, because there's, even just walking to the closest park is a hike, especially for little kids. It would be criminal, in my opinion, to add three more cops when we have yet to fund our alternative response team and follow the guidelines that the citizens want. This is Urbana. We're a special place that, like, as you heard, if you were at Danielle's presentation, an unparalleled level of care here in Urbana. And it's why I live here, and I love it here, and I invest here, and I do not want our jails filled. I want services. I do want code enforcement down on that end of town. I want to make sure that we're asking the landlords to step up. I'm a landlord myself. I know it's not easy to pay the taxes we have to pay here. It isn't. It isn't easy to make every, all the ends meet at the end of the month. But I know we can do it, and I want to give our new mayor a chance to do it without draining our resources. I feel like we've already done it with the fire station down there, that we spent way too much money on that fire station. We did not need to do that. We could have easily remodeled. We chose not to. I don't understand it, but it's water under the bridge. But I'm not going to sit by and not say something while you're thinking about giving, what, we've had 71% increase in six years in the police force? Hello, people, what? No. All right, that's it. I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lila Leopols. I'm a resident of Ward Four in Urbana. And just chiming in here with other folks in the room, that given that the vast majority of police calls are for nonviolent or noncriminal instances, I urge the Council to clarify and reconsider how, and when, and why included in this year's proposed budget is such significant funding increases for new police officers. When just last year, the Police Department was given funding to hire up to eight new positions, including a social worker, yet it still seems none of these positions have been filled. So, how can we really know what's needed without, at the very least, seeing what things might look like with those positions in place? And why are there no solid plans for the new substation in place to justify its quite large asking price? There haven't really been any details put forward, whereas last week, the firefighters offered direct and transparent evidence of the way they, the ways they try to save costs in their work, and also responded with openness to questions about alternative response models, and how they might help free firefighters up to do the work for which they're uniquely trained. So, instead, in the spirit of making things a bit better for everyone, we could avoid letting massive amounts of work already undertaken by the Council and local partners on initiatives such as the Alternative Response Task Force from going to waste. The task force has been years in the making, and has the potential to not only free up police officers to serve their community in the ways most aligned with their training, but also to offer services to alleviate the full spectrum of hardships people in Urbana are facing. The opportunity to participate in a police, a police force somewhere that has an alternative response model in place would offer all police workers the chance to be at the forefront of policing models in this country. And this seems like something worth trying, especially given the current retention rates, if I'm correct. This could be a really impactful and meaningful part of the extended working environment Urbana can offer police workers in a way that enriches their career and community lives. And in the spirit, again, of making things a bit better for everyone, this could also mean, at the very least, steering way far away from the direct tangible, unignorable cruelty of a food tax. I hope this Council steadfastly stands by its previous decision to repeal an increased food tax. A food tax is a direct daily hit on the people of Urbana that will be felt by all, and especially those already hard off. It is cruel to put people in a position of having to decide which essential food items they can go without for any reason. So, I'm asking, what is the reason in this case? And is it worth inciting agony in day-to-day lives of people in Urbana by adding unwarranted strain into those decisions? So, if we want to give our police force the full set of tools to contribute to community safety, this doesn't have to mean a blank check. It means making sure the resources to care for our most vulnerable, vulnerable, excuse me, are there, and that all of the work that has already gone into repairing this task force is, again, not lost. So, we do have a chance here, and I hope the police can see this as an opportunity to offer new workers the chance to be a member of a team that can, again, explore the most innovative and proven ways to save time and money, so they can focus on their craft. This is a process every branch of Urbana is having to do. Figure out funding, figure out how to work, do more with less. And it's time that we signal to the Police Department, with all due respect, that asking them to do this work along with everyone else is simply not a reprimand, but it's a respectful plea to fully participate in Urbana governance, in which no one entity should be given a blank check. We need less investment in paths to prisons, and more investment in keeping communities intact. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maxwell. I'm a resident of Ward Four in Urbana. I'm a licensed social worker, and once again, I'm up here because I'm ashamed of the City Council's practices. I was here last year advocating for the same changes to prevent the city from wasteful spending on its ineffective and harmful police force. I want to thank those of you that chose to care for your constituents last year and hear us out. I want to give extra thanks to those of you wearing masks and protecting immunocompromised members of your community. But once again, this Council is dragging us out on these fine Monday nights to, once again, advocate for the right to be heard, and to remind you to care for your community. Why is it that you immediately decide that resources should go to expansion of police forces in our community time and time again? Have the seven of you learned nothing in these years of public service about what our community wants, what it needs, and what it means to be effective? I could point out that over 90% of police calls across the nation are for nonviolent events, so why would we bring a gun to that situation? But I just don't think you would listen. I could point out that police only managed to avoid killing a civilian one day this entire year, but I don't think you would listen. I could point out the police only solve 10% of violent crimes, but I don't think you would listen. I could point out that increasing police presence and funding has no impact on crime rates, and in fact, only leads to increased uses of force, but I don't think you would listen. So, this is what I ask instead. If you truly care about your communities, reflect deliberately and critically. Think about your values and how you see police used in our community. Police are called out to respond to crimes in progress. That means they inherently cannot prevent them, and all research supports this. Now, think, why do people commit crime? Predominantly, they are doing it to try to get their needs met. No one goes out and sells drugs because it's their only, it's the best thing that they can do with their lives. They're doing it because it's their only option. They're trying to do what they can to survive, to get money, food, shelter, and hopefully get a life in this cruel world. Now, tell me how increased policing is going to prevent these desperate people from trying to get their needs met. You know it won't work. I know it won't work. The whole city knows increasing police budgets won't work. But we all know it can. We all know that increasing social services can help people thrive. I implore you to literally take any alternative to increasing police budget. You can plant a free orchard in any of our parks to offer free food to people living in poverty. You can add rent controls and subsidies to prevent parasitic landlords from taking advantage of people with nowhere else to live. You can have social workers show up to the 70% of calls in our community that don't require someone with a gun. Hell, buy a herd of sheep. That's a better option than increasing police funding. Are we going to be back here in 10 years arguing for the same thing over and over, trying to stop you from raising the bloated police budget? Or are we going to buckle down and just fucking prevent it?
Hi, my name is Kate Cruzwick. I don't have much to say, but I just want to come here and add my voice and say I also don't support increasing the police budget. As people have said, we've been here year after year. Overwhelmingly, this community has again and again asked you not to increase the police budget, especially by the amounts that you have. And it's quite disappointing that you guys haven't been listening. So, I hope this year you actually take the time and listen to what everyone is saying over here, and instead, direct those funds toward a needed more. Social services, anything, like, there are a lot of people in need in this community, and increasing the police budget is not going to help that at all. We need more social services, more job opportunities. We need more housing, anything but increasing the police budget. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Addison Gray. I'm a resident of Urbana. I was born here. I grew up here. I love it here. I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, which I bring up because last year, after we passed our last budget, we spent a lot of time going door-to-door, in East Urbana especially, in the neighborhoods where this new substation theoretically would be serving, talking to people about what safety actually means to them. And we did that work because police was on the agenda, and we wanted to understand what these residents actually want, and not just what the Police Department says they need. So, we listened, right? Not in a meeting room, or in like, a badly advertised public forum that requires people to give up hours of precious time, but on their porches, in their yards, walking around their neighborhoods. And what we heard was that people want to feel safe, right? But they don't believe that more police are going to get them there. They want safe housing, youth programs, mental health resources, spaces for their kids to play, trash cans. And above all, they want to be heard. We put together a full write-up of those conversations, including extensive quotes from residents. And if you haven't read it, I really encourage you to. It's at plcweb.org, and I'm happy to email a direct link to it to anyone who would like to read it. So, with that in mind, here's what I want to say about the budget. First up, the grocery tax. I know that the budget memo says it's a continuation of existing revenue, that SNAP purchases are exempt, and that the burden on low-income families is small. But the reality is, SNAP is being cut. Like, we can't say that it's not going to affect people who are on SNAP if we don't have SNAP. Champaign Unit Four has already said they're going to have to scale back their free breakfast and lunch program. And now, you're telling people that they need to pay more at the grocery store so the city can fund more police. And even if it's just a penny on the dollar, right, that's still a regressive tax. It's a regressive tax that feels very similar to the Public Safety Sales Tax that Champaign County Voters as a whole rejected last November. It's a regressive tax that not only the lowest, that not only the lowest-income people, but also the most overpleased are going to be forced to bear the burden to bear the burden of paying for their own policing. I just, I don't support using that money to pay for more policing. If we're going to implement a grocery tax, it should not be for more policing. Second, more patrol officers. We've now had more than a year of promises about the Alternative Response Task Force. It is something that was budgeted for, that was promised to us, and not a single meeting has happened, right? I get things move slowly in government, but are we really considering more police officers when we haven't had a single meeting of this Alternative Response Task Force? So this budget instead asks us to believe that hiring more patrol officers will somehow free up time for these community engagement officers. But that's, that's not how it works, right? We're just expanding traditional policing under a different name. These community engagement team positions remain unfilled because the patrol is understaffed. So we're saying that maybe we need to hire more patrol officers so that maybe someday these community roles can be used. That's, that's not a new model. That's just more police. Now, I'll say to Chief Boone's credit, right? He's said multiple times that too much is placed on the police, especially around domestic violence. He's talked about the need for a family justice center where survivors can get help without having to go to a police station. He said the current model doesn't work, and he's right. But instead of building that vision, this budget throws nearly a million new tax dollars a year into patrol and supervisory positions. We could use that money to fund housing support for survivors, community-based violent intervention, youth services, things that actually get to the root causes. But instead, we're being told that more officers will somehow build trust. Hiring more cops after the public repeatedly asks you not to does not build trust. This budget also doesn't explicitly fund new surveillance technology, but we know that this is what the cops keep asking for. They've pushed for automatic license plate readers. And additionally, new technology like automated social media monitoring, while saying that they want to build relationships with the community. Last year, Urbana police manually scraped social media to identify Palestine solidarity protesters and helped bring some of the harshest charges in the country down on them. These are charges that were denounced by the ACLU. And now we want to automate that process? Uh-uh, no. Surveillance technology like this does not build community trust. It suppresses dissent. That's unacceptable, and that's why I also want to say that, in case I don't get a chance to say it later on, I fully support the ordinance requiring city council approval for any new surveillance tech. So that's my time. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Galen Seligman. I'm an Urbana resident. I'm also against spending money, more money on the police. Surveillance systems are being misused by people outside our community already. As reported recently, the licensed police reader data has been stolen and used by a Texas prosecutor from Illinois. This could be used to misuse, to target trans people, people seeking abortions, immigrants, or even really just anyone else. We live in a world of data, and every bit of data right now is being collected and used by people like the GOP mega donor, Peter Thiel and his company Palantir, the Israeli surveillance company Celebrite, to target people in our community already. And it will be misused by ICE and DHS to kidnap and enslave our neighbors, as we've seen happening already in other communities around us. Since Urbana seems to have some cash-burning hole in our pockets, I made a little list of some things that we could do instead with that money. I don't expect that these will all be immediately actionable, but maybe it can help us think a little bit more creatively. So first, a real crisis response team with real health professionals, like the theoretical crisis response task force. We could send this money to our school systems. It's always a good thing to invest in our next generation. We can invest in housing directly. This could be things like grants for building repairs or for first-time and first-generation homeowners. We could use this money to reexamine our housing laws and zoning laws. Single-family, single-use housing with, with large setbacks is restrictive and prevents building larger housing structures to help drive costs down. We could use the money to directly help the poorest people in our community, like Champaign failed to support the Stride Shelter last year, so there's a gap that we could be meeting here. We can cut sales taxes. They're, as mentioned, already regressive. They directly impact the poorest people in our community the most, the poorest families especially. We could buy and forgive medical debt for people in Urbana. It's expensive to, to try and go to the hospital and stay alive. And we could make that easier as a community. We could invest more in IMTD. I love the buses. I use the buses all the time. We could add more routes or find other ways to reduce wait times. We could start a community bike program and add lanes and other ways for people around the community without depending entirely on cars. And we can expand our community parks programs. So these are some of the ideas. Some of them have already been mentioned by our neighbors. And maybe we can get some of these creative ideas going. Thanks.
Janice Walker, Urbana. I will be reading a letter from one of my coworkers who is out tonight, sick. Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Tammy Little, and I'm the Transitional Housing Coordinator with First Followers. I want to discuss the Silver and Walter area, the same area that Chief Boone discussed cleaning up in 2023. And here we are in 2025 with the same issues. The issues that I will raise are things that need resources from the city budget to address. In 2023, I was part of the TBRA Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Pilot Program in collaboration with the RPC. There were two of our clients that were placed in the housing complex then called SBRM. We went through the application and approval for the TBRA program, and both tenants started their tenancy in December of 2023. Both tenants experienced neglect from issues pertaining to their individual units. Not only did the name change to Havenstone, but there were at least three managers during the first year. Also, the property is owned and managed from Brooklyn, New York. One of the tenants never had a key to the mailbox, which should have been an easy fix. However, it was not. The lease was almost up when finally a key was provided. The other tenant experienced an electrical fire in her unit. And despite the urgency to get this client out of the unit due to health concerns, it took months to finally move her to another unit. It took RPC case manager Tammy Ward to threaten stop payment before this client was moved to another unit. She had water coming through the ceiling and a lack of electricity. I reached out to several agencies to be advised how to move forward. I was advised that both had to request an inspection from the city. Both these clients were advised to submit a complaint to the city to have someone to come out and inspect the apartment, to get the landlord to comply in providing a clean, inhabitable unit in lieu of rent. Excuse me. However, we all know that this is a process and weeks and months went by, and the landlord was never motivated to even reply to an email. Attempts to call them to the number on file were never answered by anyone. How can anyone attempt to resolve any landlord-tenant dispute when the landlord cannot be located, does not answer calls and/or emails? The issue here is that this property that is supposed to house individual has multiple violations, and some of the units are deemed inhabitable. How long do these individuals, who pay almost $900 in rent, have to suffer and live in deplorable conditions that, in my personal opinion, were not fit for an animal? This is a community issue. It should be addressed and hold these out-of-state landlords accountable. These individuals are human beings, not animals, and should be treated as such. No one pays rent. No one who pays rent should experience living in a unit that is uninhabitable. According to one source, one issue is the abject failure of some landlords to maintain and manage their apartment properties. Some property conditions have gotten much worse in the last couple of years, to the point where buildings are partially occupied or have been determined unfit for human occupancy. That's from Riser 2025. Riser 2025 also stated a significant number of multifamily properties in that area also have transitioned away from local ownership. It's much harder to hold an LLC with thousands of units around the country accountable. Our current enforcement tools, such as the Rental Registration and Inspection Program, or the Aggravated Nuisance Ordinance, are no longer adequate to deal with the level of neglect and rapid deterioration we're seeing. This trend isn't unique to Urbana, but it must be addressed for the health and safety of the community. I am urging city council to move forward to hold these out-of-state landlords accountable and do not have a place in our community. I urge the city council to allocate funds to revamp this much-needed neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Kilgore from First Followers and a resident of Urbana. A budget, a budget is a moral document, right? It's a statement of your values. And as much as I appreciate the seriousness that the city council is devoting to the budget, to me, the two issues that the budget needs to put front and center, which are not mentioned explicitly there, is poverty and racism. And unless we're include, unless we're using those issues to frame the budget, we're not really going to get at the core of the problems that are, that are there. And I mean, people that have come before me have listed all those problems and listed all the, all the needed solutions. But somehow, it just, it, it ends up being a laundry list if we don't actually put them into a bigger context. So I want to, I, I also want to make a point that I know that people have been coming here for quite a bit of, quite a number of years, talking about police. And people say that, that they're not being heard. But they are being heard because if we go back to 2023, when Chief Boone first came to town, his first proposal was that we have 15 new police officers. And people have been fighting and pushing back against that since 2023. And I think the city council, and I think Chief Boone, has listened to that. And yes, they, there's still a desire to have three more officers. And a lot of people have pointed out that that's probably not the best use of city funds. But we have made some progress. We have gotten the ear of, of the council's council and the decision-makers on, on that issue. But nonetheless, the budget needs to recognize that Urbana has a poverty rate of 24%. That is twice the poverty rate of the state of Illinois, more than twice the poverty rate of the US nationally. I don't think people think of Urbana as a poor city. But if we, if we listen to the, to the housing, to the home-owning ratios that the, that Sharon Irish put forward about, in, in, in relation to reparations, 85% of white people have, are homeowners, and 6% of black people are homeowners. Obviously, there's a huge discrepancy there that, that a budget should be recognizing. And I don't think we, we actually have, have seen that in, in, in the budget. A couple of other things. One, I think that, as many people have said, we should be funding the alternative response before we spend more money on police. That's obvious. We've seen, we've seen many people talk about alternative response models. We've looked at alternative response models in other jurisdictions, and we've seen all the possibilities. So why isn't it, why isn't it moving here? It needs, it needs to move. I also, I think that Urbana should be going on an anti-poverty campaign, an anti-incarceration campaign. That should be the, a feature of, of what Urbana does as a city. And the last thing I want to say is that one of the, one of the, the issues that people have not raised here is the issue that First Followers deals with, and that is reentry for people coming home from prison, right? So we have had no funds for the last three months to, to provide people who are coming home from prison. We've had no money for rental assistance. We've had no money for clothing. We've had no money to help people get cell phones. People coming home from prison, they have nothing. They have nothing. We've been able to, with funding, provide them with what they need to get on their feet, but in the last three months, we haven't had anything. I'm hoping that this budget will find some money for reentry and, and, and so we can be able to provide services with all the effectiveness of the, of the Cunningham Township. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Autumn, and I'm a resident of Champaign. But my family works, shops, and visits Urbana daily. Sometimes Urbana feels more like home to me because when I first moved here, I came to Urbana. For four years, I lived a block away from these chambers, and I could see all of City Hall from my front porch. So Urbana is very much in my heart. My friends and neighbors here today have provided a lot of data about policing, so I'm going to take a moment to provide my personal experiences to put some of these concepts into context. First and foremost, I came here from Houston, a much larger city with a bigger police budget. Texas may rank low in funding for education and social services, but policing is well-funded. So much so that the firm I worked for was a long-term consultant for the sheriff's office to help build trust in minority communities. So I understand what it feels like to be on that side of the room. I had the sheriff on speed dial and knew exactly how to engage with the system if I needed it. But that didn't help me when I became the victim of a crime. An unknown man began stalking me and sneaking to my home in the middle of the night to leave messages around my car and my porch. I called the police on two occasions. They came to my door to issue reports and said they would increase patrols in the area, but had nothing else to offer for my safety. Two weeks later, a man followed me to my apartment laundry facility in broad daylight and put a loaded gun in my face. In that moment, staring down the barrel of a gun, I was powerless. I didn't know what or how much he was going to take from me or if he was going to let me live after he did. It didn't matter how many police I knew or how many patrols they added to my neighborhood. Thankfully, all he took that day was my money, ID, and credit cards. After he ran off, it took the police more than an hour to respond. And even then, they didn't follow up to get video footage of the perpetrator using my cards at stores or surveillance footage from the area. They did nothing. They issued me another useless report. So I did my own detective work. I called my bank to get transaction timestamps and locations, and I obtained corresponding video footage from those locations. And from those videos, what do you think I saw? The man used my card first to put gas in his car. His second stop was the grocery store, where he bought many groceries. One of the most recognizable items was toilet paper, basic needs. The root cause of crime is poverty, yet the council would like to impose a grocery tax that would disproportionately affect low-income families by taxing basic necessities, pushing those struggling even further into poverty and possibly crime. I often wonder if the funding for those positions of those countless officers who offered useless responses to my calls had been allocated to preventative social programs instead, if it could have prevented that man from traumatizing me so that he could buy gasoline and groceries. More police are not going to fix the problems. Cops are reactionary. They come after the crimes are committed. They don't prevent crime from occurring, and they penalize those in poverty rather than lifting them out. So I ask the council to please reconsider these positions. Fill the ones you already have open from your last budget and focus more on preventative measures. We don't have funding for a homeless shelter, and you're asking us to pay for new police officers just to patrol around and make people feel safer. But crime doesn't work that way. When I came here and I lived a block away, I thought it would be, be pretty stupid for anyone to commit a crime this close to the police department, with officers regularly coming in and out. But it didn't stop two young men from coming to my front door and trying to break into my home at 3:00 AM. They were in plain sight of the police department on my front porch. We opened the door and surprised them, asking jokingly if they were our pizza delivery guy, which we weren't expecting, but they didn't know that. They were flustered and quickly left. They were flustered and quickly left. Earlier this spring, a few friends and I had come across an intoxicated man who was roaming the local streets nude. He was clearly in need of help, but none of us were going to call the police because we knew that they didn't have the help he needed. We knew their presence would likely make it worse, both in short and long term, for this man. A social worker would have been an amazing resource. Instead, I trusted a local friend who has experience and relationships with troubled individuals and unhoused to go check on him and take him some clothes. This is what we need, a proactive compassionate response when someone needs help with mental health, domestic issues, or substance abuse. Cops have never made me feel safer. They haven't even properly dealt with investigating or seeking justice in violence crimes against me. I once again ask this Council to reconsider the proposed food tax on the most vulnerable in our community and not turn around and fund reactionary policing of the poor who paid for it. Please fund preventative programs before throwing money, throwing more money at policing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jane McClintock, and I'm a resident of Urbana. And I'll be brief because I think everyone has pretty much said it before, both this evening and many evenings before, that the community would really like to see us fill those open positions that we have, that we funded last year. You know, we're excited about the social worker. We'd like to see that happen. And I know these things take time. At the same time, we're still trying to get our alternative response off the ground. We still haven't finished that report, which should give us a lot of clarity on how we can deal with our 70-ish percent of nonviolent, noncriminal calls. So I see no reason, I don't even think it would be practical to think that we could fill those 12 positions this year. So why would we make this controversial, unnecessary, and like irresponsible investment in four new police positions before we finish the report, before we fill the positions that we've already funded? Let's do that first and not waste any more time, or I won't waste any more of your time saying what I've already said, and I appreciate your work on all of this. And I do hope that the, as many people have said before, that the alternative response and, you know, everything that we can do together will really make the police position a more fun job, more satisfying, because as folks have said before, it's a moral injury to go to somebody who is, clearly has material needs with the only thing to offer is a punitive solution. When I did my ride-along, the officer had some balls and stuff in the back of the car, which he was able to offer to the children, which is really nice. You know, I think every one of our officers is, can be, and should be a community engagement officer. We don't need special officers for that. That's every patrol officer. And fine, we can have this experiment, you want to do it, but that should be every one of our officers, and they should be working hand-in-hand with the social workers, with the organizations in the community to provide those proactive solutions so that they can walk into work every day knowing that they're providing long-term solutions, not knocking people down. Also, I think the grocery tax is a bad idea because, yeah, people aren't going to have, we can't count on food stamps with this federal administration, and they run out. And what about those middle-income people? Those are the people squeezed the most on health insurance. They're squeezed in every direction. And so a food tax? Please, let's not do that. The governor had a good reason to get rid of that. So appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carmen Blueby. I live in Ward 2. I want to offer a maybe controversial perspective and thank the officers for being here. It's often a thankless job, and this seems like a, a community where there's even less thankless. But I also see a really huge need for, you know, repairing relationships with community members, and I hope the officers will listen to their constituents. And I have to offer that, that those here have spent more than half the time during the public comment session on their smartphones, and that speaks volumes to me, to be honest. And I hope that, I hope that you'll lower your defenses and open your hearts and, and take the perspective of your constituents seriously and embrace the opportunity to repair a clearly fractured relationship with the community through the Alternative Response Task Force. And also, I, I haven't had a chance to read the 300-page budget document yet, but I hope this grocery tax, tax is a joke. It is surely tone-deaf at this moment in history. I hope you reconsider that promptly. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Massey, and I live in Urbana, right across from the Silver area. That is a little bit of a problem. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I thought about it, and I might have a couple of things to add. First, the grocery tax, at that time, really not a good idea. If we want to get more income, maybe we should look at the landlords that rent to our tenants here and then disappear. So we have an ordinance, maybe we can work something out. The landlords run away, by the way, with the security deposits. So if a tenant pays about $800, and if they have about 100 tenants, bigger complexes, they take that money with them. And it is a fairly difficult legal process when we pay for the relocation to actually get money back from those landlords that are somewhere in New York, Brooklyn, and we cannot even find them. The tenants have no possibility in the legal process without an attorney to actually get damages for their flooded houses, for the property that they lose, all of that. So maybe looking into holding the landlords more accountable to get more money in. But that, at this current time, with the SNAPs benefits probably being reduced, adding a grocery tax will not help. So now speaking about the Silver Barbara area. I heard a lot of comments today, and the question that came up, why does it have to be an either-or? Why can we not include the police work plus preventative work? I'm not an expert. I don't know how many police officers you need. I, I trust that there is a, is a thought behind it. But when I think about that Silver area, having another police station there does have some benefits. There are crimes being committed, and people are in danger. And when I work with that community, and if I have to go see people that I work with, I also want to be safe. The people there should be safe. I walk my dogs there very much, very often, just to establish connections, and it's not always a good feeling. So we need, on the one hand, the police to enforce the law. This is the job of the police. The police should also create trust in the community, so if a crime is committed, that people reach out to the police. This is a lot of work, and it requires time. On the other spectrum, we also have to invest in this community, and that means resources, primarily housing, and more financial security. We need to check, does everybody get their benefits? So we have to do it all together. The alternative response team is a good idea, but if I think about a domestic violence situation, we cannot send a social worker there. This is a situation that can go really bad in a couple of seconds, and people can lose their life. And I don't want to see a police report where a social worker gets seriously hurt, and at the end, we have the alternative response team plus the police that adds more people, a lot more people can get hurt. So I want to really talk about collaborating with each other, putting resources together, and the police is a group that has to be part of it. And if more police is, is needed, then we also have to invest more in resources. We can only do it together. So this is what I have learned in my time. We need more people in the boat and maybe also address a different kind of policing with the community support, with the community trust, but also fighting the crime that is going on in a specific area, so people can be safe there. And I have 1 minute and 5 seconds left. This is a surprise, so. Have a good evening, and I, I trust that you come to a good conclusion with the budget, which is not an easy decision.
Yeah, hi. My name is Brian Maxwell. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm going to pretty much say what a lot of people are already coming here tonight to say is that I think that the, this budget could allocate resources better away from the proposed, I don't know if it's $600,000 or $800,000 at this point, towards the police budget. It seems like there's one of two ways that the Council can go at this point, and I hope either of them are chosen over allocating more money towards policing. I'm honestly in favor of keeping the grocery tax if it's put towards services that actually help people, that are going to be affected the most by that grocery tax. One of the Council members sent a really great list of services that could be funded in this community in lieu of more policing. You know, grants to First Followers for reentry, access to 30-day drug and alcohol treatment programs, relocating families of suffering domestic violence, youth internships, the alternative response model. You know, that, that is something that would be a win-win, where you're taking responsibilities off the police department and also putting more social workers in the community. Seems like a no-brainer, and it's done for a lower cost, so it seems like a no-brainer. Or just getting rid of the grocery tax. It doesn't seem like a great time to be making people's food more expensive. And I'm mostly against the, the idea of a food tax in service of, mostly in service of increasing police funding. It feels like it's continuing along this trend that we have in the federal government, state government, local government, of making people's basic needs, food, healthcare, housing, more expensive, more out of reach in service of increasing militarization of our communities, increasing surveillance, increasing technologies to surveil our communities, punitive solutions, incarceration. So I hope that the Council comes to a different conclusion as far as what to spend the grocery tax on, or whether to implement it at all. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to address the Council?
My name is Gwyneth Crepsio. I'm a resident of Ward 2. I am showing up tonight both as a part of and on behalf of the folks that are disabled and experiencing, both in body and in mind, are needing our support. I, I live as a, I'm a caregiver, support person. These are the people that I work for and with, the people that I love and are in my family and in my friendships, and, and just are a part of my community. And I feel the need to, to speak, in part because it is often, it's, these are very inaccessible settings in which to speak, and so I hope that whatever I have to say lives up to the, to the trust that those people put in me. Front and foremost in my mind is that, depending on what statistics you look at, a third to a half of the people that are killed by police have some form of disability, and I think that's really important to consider when you're trying to figure out what to do with, with our money that we're trusting you to make good decisions with on our behalf. I personally know that the, the folks that are mentally ill or physically ill find themselves unable to exist in public because they are afraid that the police will be called on them, and they will be forcibly incarcerated, or institutionalized, or harmed right there in the streets, and that's untenable. I operate with these folks every day. They are not a harm to me. They are more often a harm to themselves than they are to anybody else, and they deserve our kindness and our respect. And honestly, most people forget that they are so close to being one of those people as opposed to being the person that would be harmed by them. And so I would love for you to remember that we are all human people with very subtle balances of hormones and chemicals and matter in our bodies that would make us likely to be in public in a way that could have the police called on us at any given time, both in that we're a few bad months away from experiencing homelessness, experiencing a mental break, going through an injury or an illness. And so when we're in service to those folks, we're in service to ourselves, to our future selves, to our children, both as their children and as they grow up, and making a community in which those folks can exist safely among us and not just tucked away at home where they have to spend the majority of their time dealing with very faulty, insufficient public services and the amount of paperwork and the amount of dismissal and, and just common like grudgery that they have to put up with in addition to whatever they might be experiencing in their minds and bodies. Let's do everything that we can to make their lives easier at home and in public and be with them, because they're not, we, we speak about them like they're an other and like they're a separate population from us, but they are us. They, they are in this room with us right now. They are friends and families, and so if we could do everything we can to create easeful, accessible services that are not terrifying to them, that would be greatly appreciated. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and please keep those folks and keep yourselves and, and those issues in mind when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Committee of the Whole? This is the public hearing. We do have letters that we have received, but we're going to address those in the public comment for the City Council, or the Committee of the Whole meeting, so we'll, we'll get to them. Seeing no other public comment, that is the last item on the public hearing's agenda, so we are adjourned. Now we can get to calling to order the Committee of the Whole meeting for the Urbana City Council for this evening. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey?
Here.
Councilmember Colosseiti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
All right, and now we're finally going to get to approving these minutes that we've tried to approve a couple of times. We have minutes from May 27, 2025, Committee of the Whole meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Shandra?
Seconded.
Seconded by Grace. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, how about you online? You okay with them?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So let's have a vote for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The minutes passed unanimously. Next up is additions to the agenda. I've been informed that item E3 will not occur tonight. It'll, it'll happen next week.
Yes.
Is that correct? And that City Attorney would like to provide a brief update that will substitute in there for that item. Okay? Everybody okay with those adjustments?
Could you clarify? Are you replacing three?
Yeah, I figured we'd just put it, slot the attorney in for item three there.
In addition to legal division staffing? Or can you cover it in that one? I am just confused if we're removing it or if we're also adding something.
I can just stay at the desk and do them back-to-back.
Okay. What's the topic again?
This is just an update on the, the OSF announcement of consolidation of their facilities and information we were able to gather this past week about process related to that.
Okay.
So we're just removing three?
We're going to have that be number three. All right, any, any concerns? Can we consider that unanimous consent, those adjustments to the agenda? Then we'll move on to presentations and public input. Would anybody in the public like to address the Committee of the Whole? We do have some letters that we will read. In the meantime, while you're thinking about it, Grace, if you would start out.
I'm unable to, and you got the timer going. I think they're mostly short, but let me know if any of them go over. I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please read this into the public record during the meeting. Dear Mayor and City Council, I urge you to not vote in favor of the budget as proposed. I suggest one major change and several minor changes before you vote to approve the budget for FY 2026. Firstly, I strongly object to the inclusion of a grocery Firstly, I strongly object to the inclusion of a grocery tax as a revenue stream. Sales taxes of any type are highly regressive and increase social and economic inequities between haves and have-nots. Grocery taxes magnify this injustice and magnify economic inequality. I am highly disappointed that you are considering a grocery tax just months after it was reported that a new grocery store was approved in an area that has been traditionally seen as a food desert. Please look for other forms of revenue. Second, please reconsider, please reconsider funding the additional, the addition of four new positions for Urbana Police. There were several positions that were approved for last year that have not been filled. Why are approving additional positions when there are unfilled positions from last year? We do not need more cops. We need a fully funded alternative response model that is separate from the police department. Please adjust your budget to match your stated priorities. Budgets are moral documents. Please ask yourselves if the budget you see before you tonight aligns with your values and the values of the residents of Urbana. Sincerely, Dawn Owen Deenam. Hiday.
All right, next up, dear, do you want to reset the clock? I think this one's going to get in time. Dear Urbana City Council, my name is Sana Sabuwallah. I'm a resident of Urbana and a member of Champaign-Urbana Muslim Action Committee. This time last year, I was regularly attending city council meetings to encourage the city to invest in an alternative response to policing task force. Now I'm writing to ask you to use that alternative response task force, see what it is capable of here, before investing more of our city's funds in policing. The alternative response task force should meet and make its recommendations before the city authorizes more spending on new officers. I believe that the funds that would be allocated to new officers would be better put to use via direct assistance. That money could go to a lot further, to directly solving the problems that exist in Urbana. The township is doing research on alternative response models that is, that is promising. Let the alternative response task force do its job before hiring more cops. Fill the vacancies that exist in the police department before allocating more money for more hires. Ultimately, the council agreed that an alternate response was necessary when you agreed to create the task force. Let's see what it can do before we hire more officers and leave alternatives underfunded. Thank you for your time, Sana Sabuwallah.
Dear Urbana City Council, please read my comment into the public record this evening. I am an Urbana resident and would like to add my voice to the many other voices, asking you to not authorize the hiring of more police officers for the fiscal year 2026 budget. The, and the Urbana Police Department has not yet filled its currently vacant positions, including the social worker who was authorized but never hired. Furthermore, I do not support more money being spent on police in this town when our community members' needs are not currently being met. Our community members face housing and food insecurity, need support with finding employment and mental health services. As a library sciences graduate from UIUC and former worker and volunteer at both public libraries and CU, I spoke with community members who asked for more of these services. They did not ask for police. The police are not equipped to provide these services and should not be placed, should not be the place we seek them. To support our community, we need to be directing more funds to services that help us better care for each other and assist community members in crisis. A police response often escalates or exacerbates these issues rather than addressing them. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sam Eglar, Urbana resident, Ward Four.
All right, next, and I'm going to need the clock for this one. To Mayor Deshaun Williams and City Council members, first, I would like to say thank you for what you do. I'm sure it is not easy to be in the position and try to satisfy everyone's ideas and desires, which is virtually impossible. My name is Darlene Bailey, and again, I'll say that I'm just an ordinary citizen of Ward Three, working for a safe and healthy community, and I feel strongly that we could benefit greatly from having a community engagement officer working in our community. I strongly feel we need a community engagement officer to assist the community on a few things for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026, and to work on some preventative measures. I do not have any training in being a law enforcement officer, but I do know that at the moment, there is still a humanitarian side to law enforcement. I understand the police are to enforce the law and maintain safety and patrol assigned areas to detect criminal activity. I also see that some laws were updated in 2025, and I paid particular attention that police are to ensure citizens obey the law, and the word obey sort of threw me off a bit. Since most of our police force's time is spent on non-criminal calls, it will be very important to have someone participate directly with community safety programs and preventative methods to alleviate hotspots of undesirable community burdens, because people are needed to help residents help themselves and develop the responsibilities of self-supporting community, which will need less police involvement. Can someone please direct me on the qualifications and procedures for the Urbana Citizen Review Board? I am not so much concerned with misconduct and punishment, as I would like to work on solutions to create and promote a much more morally, a more morally display of etiquette. I seek no benefits or rewards, but I can offer commitment and objectivity because I understand both citizen and law enforcement, but we do not want to be cruel with this on either side. I had the privilege of sitting down with a sergeant for a few minutes, which was a very productive few minutes. During the entire time, he had his eye on his phone constantly, checking it, and soon they, a person, finally came and completely called him out for assistance on a traffic stop, which I completely understood. So I have eyewitness knowledge to how these, how things operate in this particular area. To wrap this up, I would like to say we are going to need our law enforcement team without a doubt, and that's a fact, but citizens also need to be cared for, understood, and prepped for disaster. We need to work with the police to help create an environment where we can morally help take care of ourselves. Thank you for your time, Darlene Bailey.
Please read this message aloud into the record. Hello, my name is Barry Zhang, I am constituent from Champaign. I'm writing to oppose the current city budget that would allocate money for a grocery tax to more facilities for police. The police do not need, police do not keep the community safe and are often the ones terrorizing people in our neighborhoods, especially with the advent of ICE terrorism being rampant in the U.S. Please revise the budget to be for care, not cops. Sincerely, Barry Zhang.
All right. Good afternoon. Tonight you will vote on the budget for next year. I understand that part of the budget includes spending for new police officers to be paid for by a grocery tax. As any good study of economics will tell you, families with less money spend disproportionately more on groceries. An income decreases, people spend more on necessities and less on, as income decreases, people spend more on necessities and less on luxuries. I can tell you from personal experience, I used to work at Schnucks, and ten or twenty cents made the difference between being able to eat lunch or not. We have seen everywhere the effects of extra police since the Black Lives Matter movement in 2020. We know that black communities across the country are overpoliced, and these budgets have exacerbated the issue. To force the poorest and the most marginalized people in our community to pay for the police that oppress them is naked class warfare. Indeed, we have seen the effects of the militarization of police in Los Angeles last week as police departments collaborate with immigration officials to separate families and target Latinos regardless of immigration status. This is where Urbana is headed with these policies. I strongly urge the city councillors to see the writing on the wall and protest the interests, protect the interests of their constituents, and vote against this budget. Thank you. I cede my time to the next speaker. Sincerely, Alan Romero. And then we have two more via email that came in too late to be printed. The first one comes from Dr. Evelyn Underwood. I feel that the positions for police in 2025 was enough. Trying to add more positions for 2026 is overkill because raising taxes on food when the economy is leading towards a recession because of tariffs and trade and because of cuts in the safety net is coming in the federal budget. Since the Trump administration cut $1 billion from the USDA program that supports meals on wheels, school lunch programs, small farmers reimbursement, and public food pantries reimbursement. The upcoming cuts in Medicaid and the SNAP program will push the elderly and the poor in dire straits. We should give the money to help the safety net for the most vulnerable in our, in society for survival. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood. And then the last one that I have is from Claire Johnson. My name is Claire Johnson. I live at 403 South Glover in Urbana. I'm writing to urge council members to vote against continuing the 1% grocery sales tax, which would be used to fund additional police positions. Removing this tax would ease the financial burden on residents who are already struggling to make ends meet as prices for necessities like groceries continue to rise. There are already several unfilled positions at the police department that were approved in previous budget. It seems fiscally irresponsible to approve four additional positions now, especially when the city is moving forward with an alternative response model that is likely to decrease the workload for existing officers. If anything, we should be discussing how to support direct service programs that may suffer from federal funding cuts, not increasing the police budget. Thank you. That is all we have for public comment. Anybody else wish to speak? Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Isabel Osorio. I've lived in Urbana since 2023. I'm originally from Illinois, central Illinois. I moved here from Southern Oregon where I was working as a wildfire defense landscaper. I was sent home to the Midwest because I had too much smoke exposure. So you can get a sense for who I am. I'm a respiratory care clinical support aide at Carl Hospital, which means that on any given day, I'm the person who's going to step in the room when a person is desaturating in oxygen, which means that they can't breathe, their breathing is ineffective. So your family members and you, when you're vulnerable, I'm the person who comes to help, and I'm grateful for that because I come from a place where there is wildfire smoke that chokes people out. My mother happens to be dying of COPD. And in 2023, I will say just now, for all people in the room, trigger warning, I'm going to mention sexual assault. If anyone would like to leave the room, this is the moment. In 2023, I was sexually assaulted by my boss at work at a local farm, and the only request that I made after that happened was that we would institute formal, and we would be accountable for, formal sexual harassment prevention training, because what happened to me almost killed me. I still have flashbacks. I have to pause my workday at the hospital sometimes. And I believe that if we take a moment and focus on instituting sexual harassment and sexual assault prevention training, we can protect members of the community who would go on to do things like work in the hospital, be first responders for people who are having crises, work at the grocery store and help distribute food, sit in your seats. I'm just here to raise awareness of this issue because if it hadn't been for the grace and kindness of a neighbor who spoke previously, Gwyneth, I probably wouldn't be alive. As I mentioned, I was assaulted by my boss, and that meant that I couldn't continue going to work safely. I lost my job, I lost my housing, and then I was trafficked for domestic labor in our community. And so I feel very grateful to the community of Urbana for the way that I've been lifted through that, but it is critically important to me to see our town prioritize protecting survivors beyond races. If any, if any of you know, if you call races, one of the, one of the support resources they can offer is therapy, but the waitlist is months long, and when stress disorder, suicidality is, is, is very likely. The people that I've related most to in my adult life are combat veterans from the military because they understand what flashbacks feel like, they understand what hypervigilance feels like, they understand what sweating through your clothes feels like, being afraid of people you shouldn't be afraid of. I connected with fire chief to Monade a couple of months ago, and we had a beautiful conversation, and we were able to talk about what it feels like as, as a wildfire survivor, what it feels like to watch somebody burn, or to watch somebody suffer, or to see someone die from smoke inhalation. And I just want to bring to you that sexual assault is a lot like a disabling event, like a fire. It is a disabling event, and it takes people out of your community who could be doing jobs like mine, helping people breathe. So I have no sharp demand, I have no criticism for the council, just to bring this issue to your conscious awareness to be considering. I believe I'm just planting a seed with you to think about this, and, and I would like to engage with the community about this further, because I have survived, I am surviving actively every day, and it's important to me that I wake up in the morning so that I can go to the hospital, and I can go to the oncology unit, and I can see my patients, and I can make sure that they can breathe and live, or breathe comfortably and die with dignity. And I wouldn't be able to do that. I wouldn't be able to do that if people hadn't taken care. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still Adam Nichols, and I still live in Urbana. Just wanted to say some things about my previous comments that are a little more actionable. I still do want to know why the, we're spending 33.5 million dollars more than last year, and I know some is going to the fire station, a couple million, that doesn't, that's not 30, that's a big difference. So what I'm looking for from the council when they're going over the budget is to not pass any progressive taxes, balance the budget so we're, you know, not spending more than we're bringing in, and if we do need to pass more taxes, that's fine, that's a discussion we can have, but make sure that they're progressive taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Hollenberg of South Cottage Grove at McHenry, again. Isn't fully thought out, but I'll try my best. Gwyneth Crebsio has been the one person tonight to speak up for the disabled people in our community. I am one of those disabled people, but you wouldn't know it just from looking at me. I'm not sure how many speakers we've had tonight, but one person in 100 speaking up for disability is a perfect example of the amount of consideration given to the disabled in our nation. I came up here a second time to remind us, all of us in this room, that disability is all around us, both visible and invisible. It's not just people in wheelchairs or with canes or hearing aids and service dogs. Anyone with a chronic health condition is disabled. Their body is unable to function in the normal way, but you can't see that externally. This is a reminder to treat every person with dignity and respect because you don't know what's going on in their life. You don't know, you just don't know. So for example, how many people in this room are wearing glasses, contacts? Show of hands. You have glasses? You're disabled. Just a friendly reminder, because you probably take that for granted, because you have this disability, but it's common enough that the accommodation for that is widely accessible. So I'm saying all this just as a reminder to treat people with kindness, ourselves included, but as it's been stated, like the high percentage of people who encounter police who have various disabilities, whether physical or mental or societal, and we just need to be easing these burdens and providing services to meet the physical and, what is it, the like object need, material needs of the people. That is how we prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Committee of the Whole?
Hello, my name is Gwyneth Crebsio, again. I just wanted to, to come up and clarify, I appreciate people speaking their mind, but I want to clarify that what you're doing is you are, you're finding the needs in the community, you're taking our resources, and you're deciding what is the, the best way to allocate those, those resources for the people that, that have the right tools, the right skills, the expertise to address those issues. the right skills, the expertise to address those issues. That may seem really basic, but I, I guess what I want to address is that, as a lot of people have been saying, there are a lot of nonviolent issues to respond to. And, and I'm wondering why we are sending in folks that have guns and the capacity to kill and, and are in many ways trained and encouraged to use force into these situations that need to be de-escalated. I'm absolutely sure that they, and I would hope that they have a lot of de-escalating training and are able to use those skills, but I, like I de-escalate in, in my job and in my life all the time. If I brought a weapon into those spaces, even if I was legally allowed to, that would not be serving the purpose of caring and supporting and de-escalating situations. So again, I just want to ask and kind of reiterate what everyone here has been saying tonight, which is, you know, you, you have this decision, I really liked what someone else was saying about the, the budget being a moral document, and really carefully decide what you're doing with that funding to find the people that do have the right skills for these situations, because we have an amazing amount of resources, an amazing amount of skill. There are so many people that are in need of, of jobs and so many people that want to support our community. And if you can do the magic to find a way to put the money in the right places so that those people can do this work of supporting the community that they want to be doing, that they, that they really need to do, then, then you'll be living up to your job as a public servant. So I appreciate you doing, doing that work, and I hope that that will be the reflection of the community that has continually come and spoken to you with a lot of eloquence and a lot of patience over, you know, the past years and decades, honestly. So thank you again.
Hello, everyone. I'm still Sean or Alex. I realize I signed in as Alex. I just wanted to reiterate my support for the grocery tax, but also having listened to everyone here, that we could possibly address different issues on the budget. And for instance, I am not in support of the increased staffing on the police as well. So we could potentially take those budget, you know, rework it into additional housing and supportive services for everyone in the community. As the last two people pointed out, disabilities are also very important. My wife has a disability, and it is sometimes very difficult for certain things. And, but, you know, we can, you know, take these funds. We live in perhaps one of the smartest places in the world with our beautiful university here, and we have some of the greatest minds. So we can come up with some incredible solutions that, you know, have been tried elsewhere, you know, you know, reframe them for our specific scenarios to possibly come up with extremely helpful things for our communities. So just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to address the committee of the whole? Seeing no one else, we're going to move on to present, to staff reports. The first item under staff reports is a report on the additional city arborist. It's okay, it looks like a person or two needs to take a break, so. We're not going to formally recess, we're just going to wait for that presentation. All right, I think we can go ahead. I'm sure mayor has seen this or heard about it. You need to pull the mic close to you and make sure it's on.
I'm here this evening to seek support for a funding request for a new full-time position in the Public Works Department to assist with dedicated city arborist responsibilities and to also help us out with some of the business management aspects involved in the managing of our landscape recycling center. I'd like to thank the commitment from the mayor and council in regards to stated goals into the stewardship of the urban forest. And these goals are based on a few key principles that are, include maintaining and improving the urban forest, enhancing community quality of life, sustainable management of the existing forest, seeking ways to increase the tree canopy, and also engaging in education and public engagement in regards to these efforts. Public Works has been involved for many years in several key initiatives to help support these stated goals. First and foremost is the Tree City USA designation that we're very proud to have held and maintained for fifty years since nineteen seventy-six, the year that I was actually born. And that continued commitment shows our resolve to maintain the urban forest. And that, that designation does rely upon significant time and effort and standards to do that every year. That includes maintaining a certain level of spending. It also, it involves maintenance of a citywide tree ordinance, observance of Arbor Day, and maintaining a commission, the Urbana Tree Commission. Urbana was one of the founding members in the nation for this designation when it was created. The Urbana Tree Commission, that's a formerly mayoral-appointed commission, they meet quarterly, that's a formal meeting, and they serve as an advisory commission to the city arborist in regards to policy development, tree species identification, and potential disputes that may arise. Another program that we're very proud of is the Legacy Tree Program. And this program allows us to highlight and safeguard trees that are historic, unique, rare, or otherwise significant to the community, and helps us seek public awareness as to the value of those trees. There's also Cooperative Tree Planting Program where we work with individuals, neighborhoods, organizations, and partner them to assist with the planting of new trees. Asset management is a key, key factor to maintaining the urban forest within the neighborhood of fifteen thousand tree sites that we have to manage and maintain. It takes a lot of data, tree health, maintaining that inventory, making sure that we know what's out there and what its condition is. And then I also like to speak to the day-to-day work of the operations division and the staff that take care of the systematic pruning, tree planting, tree removals, and hazard abatement, and just generally addressing resident concerns. Well, to meet these goals, over the past two decades that I've been here with the city, we've had several, several management approaches and staffing dedications. Historically, we had two supervisory positions in Public Works. We had a dedicated landscape supervisor, an arbor supervisor, and an arbor manager that served as the city arborist and the LRC manager. Around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, Public Works restructured, restructured, we combined the arbor and landscaper supervisor role into one position, reporting to an arbor manager, and had a separate dedicated city arborist, and those two shared LRC responsibilities, three employees. In two thousand nineteen, in light of the structural budget deficit and reductions, we combined the arbor, landscape, LRC supervisor, and city arborist role into one dedicated position. And part of the business management for the LRC, about twenty percent of our sustainability and resiliency's officers, officers' time is spent assisting with those responsibilities. Our current arbor, landscape, LRC supervisor slash city arborist has been with the city for twenty-eight years now, so it's very important for us to start discussing what the future for Public Works looks like. And we've had several conversations in regards to succession planning. And as part of those conversations, it's pretty clear and evident to us that the number of essential functions truly exceed the realistic bandwidth of one of the current supervisor position. So in an effort to kind of wrap our heads around this, I went through and pulled all the job descriptions for all the different variations of responsibilities and positions we've had over the years, and I just listed them straight down. Going through that list of essential functions and responsibilities, it's clear that if we want to continue to support these goals, that we need to maintain those essential services. So in an effort to provide a recommendation on how best to move forward, we're proposing revising the supervisor role to more accurately reflect the expectations of the other supervisors in the operations division. The essential functions that would maintain with the supervisor role that we're proposing are the supervisor responsible responsibilities of eleven full-time employees currently. That's four LRC employees, that's three employees dedicated to our landscaping efforts, and then three full-time arbor technicians. We appreciate the funding of the third last fiscal year. And then we do have an additional arbor landscape maintenance worker that assists our forestry team. These supervisor responsibilities can include performance evaluation, all the training that goes in with a very hazardous occupation, with arborist work and chemical applications, and all the needed traffic control when we're working the right-of-way, hiring, scheduling, injury reporting, documenting, and also our supervisors assist me in managing and maintaining their individual section budgets. So that's quite a bit of work, just with the basic supervisor responsibilities of the position, along with work planning and tracking, managing all of our resident requests for services and tree trimming, along with maintaining and planning all of our systematic tree work, making sure that all that work is tracked and documented for reporting purposes, and making sure that our employees have the tools and equipment that they need and that they're ready to go any given day. Procurement, making sure, like I said, we're procuring the species we need for, for plantings for trees and for our landscape areas, reviewing those standards and specifications. Our supervisor also helps us with supplementary contracts that we rely upon to perform all the work. We have tree planting contracts, we rely on additional help for tree removals and stump grinding, we maintain a turf mowing contract for city facilities, and we also have standalone contracts for follow road landscape maintenance and the Boneyard Creek. So our supervisor currently today and will continue to assist with those procurements, bid review, contract award, and contract oversight. Our supervisor also assists us with emergency response. With the twenty nineteen tornado was a great example of that, and as well recently with the frequencies, the storms and the derachos that come through, one bad storm can easily consume weeks of, of this employee's time in making sure that we get the city cleaned up and we're tracking and then establishing and replanting all those damaged trees. So looking at these responsibilities, in our opinion, that's a full-time job in and of itself. So what I'd like to dive into next are responsibilities that are currently being done that we would like to spread out into a new proposed role for a dedicated city arborist and LRC management assistance. These important roles include programming and community engagement. Our city arborist is essentially the city's public consultants for all things trees and landscapes, and they are our subject matter expert for engagement, resolution of resident concerns, and coordinating with other governmental agencies. We do a lot of work with the Urbana Park District. Part of this program, as I mentioned, is serving as the ex-official member of the Tree Commission, managing those meetings, taking those recommendations and feedback from that group, and actually helping to implement that. We develop and administer efforts related to public promotion of landscape recycling, arboriculture, and horticulture. And as I mentioned in that Tree City USA standard, we're, one of those requirements is that we're annually participating in Arbor Day celebrations and other public events. Moving down to plan and development review, we currently coordinate and manage on all capital projects that involve anything related to arbor landscaping. We like to continue to assist in development for plan reviews, both private developments and public developments, to see how trees are incorporated into those projects correctly and per ordinances. We assist in review in work that has been approved, making sure that it's done to our standards. We also review and amend the city arbor specifications manual as necessary. Technical assistance, we provide some technical assistance to other departments in regards to vegetation ordinances. We resolve a lot of issues in regards to tree ownership and, and jurisdictional concerns. A lot of times with fifteen thousand tree assets out there, we don't know exactly which ones are in the right-of-way and which ones may be on public property. So we work with those residents to determine whether those are our trees or their responsibility. We monitor the activities of utility companies, contractors, and private citizens in regard to, to tree ordinance and making sure that done, this work is done properly and correctly. And then also look for this position to provide technical assistance in some of our procurements. Touching on grant applications, we miss a lot of great opportunities because we simply don't have the staff time and bandwidth to follow up on these grant funding opportunities. We like to be able, expand on these opportunities. And we also have a very philanthropic nature here in, in Urbana. When we have residents coming to us, when we have residents coming to us making, wanting to offer trees or offer assistance.
Excuse me, please, could you take that conversation out of the chambers? It's distracting for the meeting. Yeah, you. Could you take it out? Thanks.
No, no, that's fine. So, so as I was stating, on grant applications, we would love to take more, better advantage of the opportunities out there for, for grants that are available to, to expand our tree planting program. And as I mentioned, we often receive donations and, and requests for people who want to be a part and contribute, that we just really don't have the time bandwidth and capacity to, to undertake. Speaking in regards to the landscape recycling center, there are responsibilities for that operation that involve budgeting, market analysis, pricing demands, web and public information management, permitting requirements that, that exist with the landfill. We have some intergovernmental agreements that need to be administration and other coordinated efforts that we feel that this position could assist us as well. For this ask, we're estimating a little over a hundred and four thousand dollars for salaries and benefits at this time. Like I said in the beginning- Like I said in the beginning, we appreciate the, this mayor and this council's support of this stewardship. We're very eager in maintaining these services. We're just, we think that really we could use a little extra help to do so. I'll take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions? Grace?
Thanks so much for the presentation, Vince, and stepping up for the city with us once again. Appreciate that. And I appreciate that we put the new arborist to work and working on our tree maintenance. I did just want to make a plug, I guess optional response, on fruit trees at the new fire stations, and that was something that there's been some background conversations about in the public right-of-way. We can have more conversations, but Sollo Grazia offered to help with some maintenance and distribution of excess fruit, and we had some other private arborist help with offering some trees and maintenance as well, and then we also have the SUN sustaining urban neighborhood grants that have some optional funding there, too. So I just wanted to make a plug when we're talking about trees and we're talking about city properties.
Fantastic.
I didn't know if you'd heard of that one.
Yeah, I'm familiar of all three of those, and realistically, I'm, this is exactly why I'm here today requesting the funding for this additional help, so that we can help explore and examine these initiatives when they come to us. Right now, our challenge is mainly just the, the time involved for us to sit down and meet with, meet with, meet with council members, meet with people who are interested in having these conversations, and then if we decide, decide to implement them, having additional staffing to do such.
So it sounds like we would be open and possibly equipped to expand some of our tree work and have even edible or fruiting trees as part of city right-of-ways and things?
With additional staff, we'd definitely have more opportunity to give these, give these consideration, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody on the phone have a question?
I have a question, that's all right.
Sure. All right, go ahead, Mary Als.
All right. Thank you, Vince, and, and I apologize if you covered this. I was trying to keep, there's a little bit of a delay with the screen and the voice and so forth, and so what I was trying to figure out is, what is the current staffing if this position is filled? So this position is supposed to be the, the manager, the person who oversees both the Landscape Recycling Center and the, so the arborist, is that correct?
We're still working on exactly the, the organizational structure and how this position would, would fit into the org chart, so to speak. The, the opportunity we're, we're exploring right now is that the operate, that the supervisor role would maintain in the operations division. We currently have six operations supervisor, because, because most of the 11 employees on that list are, are ASME employees, and, and subject to all the contractual requirements, keeping that working group under supervision, and the operations division makes, makes sense. They also assist us with snow removal efforts, sidewalk snow and that. So we're considering placing this arborist position, perhaps in our engineering division, so we could give trees the equal weight in regards to assets, as we do sanitary sewers or streets or sidewalks and, and all the other infrastructure that we maintain. Working, working in the engineering division would allow this city arborist to work directly on plan review. Our engineering department reviews development plans, both internal and external. We have a land surveyor that works in the engineering, so when we have these jurisdictional issues and concern, that person can be right next door, as well as when we're talking about, like I mentioned, the issues with utility companies and contractors and other, other entities doing work in the right-of-way on trees. We have our right-of-way technicians in the engineering department. It could be a pretty strong collaborative team and could just kind of fit right into that existing model. So that, that's currently the structure we're, we're looking at right now, but the main thing that I wanted to point out, if you look at historically up into 2019, we had three full-time supervisory management employees. Right now, we reply on the, we rely upon the same level of service from one full-time employee and about 20% of our sustainability and resiliency officer's time.
Do you foresee the continued use of contractors to do work on the, on the city trees?
Yes, I do in some capacity. We've, we've added the third full-time Arbor technician. We've had, we just actually today hired a landscape technician, so our arborists and our landscape technician, technicians work together and share some of that responsibility. We've been a little short-staffed in that regards, but I can gladly say that, that as of today, at least in the Arbor landscape section, that section's fully staffed, so we look forward to fully utilizing our three full-time Arbor technicians in that, in that, in that fourth position to get caught up on our systematic pruning. But based on the quantity of work out there, it's really realistic to me that we're probably going to maintain at some level those supplementary service contracts for the time being.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, I, I just have, oh, go ahead, Therese.
I just want to ask if, if you could send this presentation to, to us so we can look at it. Again, I'm sorry, unfortunately, I missed some of it.
I'd be glad to.
Okay, and also, and because I didn't see all of it, the arborist and Arbor supervisor are one and same, or you're talking about two different, two separate people?
So we will be looking at taking the, the job description for the current landscape Arbor supervisor position, revising that in alignment with the other supervisory positions in the, in the operations division, and then we, we would be in the process, we're in the process now of drafting a separate job description for the dedicated city arborist position that includes responsibilities and functions for, of assisting with the Landscape Recycling Center.
And how many, how many people do we have in that department to work with the trees right now?
In, so from a management perspective, we have the one full-time supervisor position. We have about 20% of the time of the sustainability, resiliency officer, and that supervisor has 11 full-time employees that report directly to him now. Four of those employees are, are dedicated to the Landscape Recycling Center, three of those employees are dedicated to our landscaping work that we do here in-house, we have three full-time ISA certified Arbor technicians who do all of our tree work, and then we have a fourth position, which is called an Arbor landscape maintenance worker position, and, and that role functions as, as support for our three full-time Arbor technicians.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, just a quick question, the $104,000, that's based on this position starting when?
We're, with approval of funding, we have to put the revised job description for the supervisor through civil service. We'd have to continue and finalize a job description for the city arborist position and get that through, approved to civil service, and then we'd have to rely upon HR's schedule to post and advertise that position.
But the budget is based on a full fiscal year?
Yes.
So, we're not going to have this in July, so we're not going to spend the full amount on this position if we approve it?
Correct.
Because it'll be August or September before they could even start?
Most likely.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Grace?
I'm trying to follow the budget numbers here in context, because it looks like overall the Public Works budget is less than last year by about like 70,000. Is that correct? I'm just trying to see where this extra salary is going with, going and what some of the other decreases are.
So if the Public Works budget overall is less than last year, then I can almost guarantee that's because there was some one-time expense in last year, in, or not last year, but the current year budget, right? So you're comparing FY '25 to FY '26, so we, we can look and check and tell you what that was, but that's the logical reason why their budget would decrease.
Okay, but I'm still confused where this $104,000 for salaries, if this is coming from urban forestry or landscape management or facilities maintenance, or kind of which fund or where that comes in here with the numbers?
I think it, I believe it was a split between LRC, the forestry budget, and perhaps one other.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's got to be a third place that that's being counted.
James, I have one additional question.
Go ahead, Mary Als.
Elizabeth, is this a reoccurring position?
Correct, yes, that's how, how we've proposed it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Next up, Legal Division staffing. Matt?
Okay. Thank you for your patience. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Legal Division's budget for the coming fiscal year and a couple of requests we have for positions within the Legal Division. Before I get into the specific requests, I wanted to just kind of go back through recent history, talk to you a little bit about our current staffing structure, and also then what legal has looked like previously. So, as you remember, I started in this position as city attorney just about a year ago, July 8th, that'll be my one-year anniversary. Prior to that time, the city attorney was, that role was filled by an outside counsel, and that was the case for about three years, I believe, two and a half to three years. And prior to that, however, for decades, there was an in-house city attorney here along with multiple assistant city attorneys, anywhere from two to three, I believe, looking back through historical documents. So, the division was also supported by administrative assistants and paralegals as well historically. So when I started in July of last year, the personnel in the Legal Division consisted of one paralegal and one administrative assistant, both one FTE, full-time employees, as well as we had one part-time administrative assistant working as a temporary employee. So over the course of the last year, as I've sort of gotten my footing, gotten used to the organization and policies and procedures and what this role entails, what legals, what legals role in the organization consists of, how we function together with other departments, as well as outside stakeholders and interests. I've also been looking at what this division needs to be for the organization in the future and, and long-term, and, and what the demands on our staff look like presently. And so in, in assessing that over this past year, it's been, it's been evident that we need some additional assistance, particularly in the form of administrative assistant help. And so we're proposing a .5 FTE administrative assistant position to be added for fiscal year, fiscal year '26, as well as a .25 law clerk position, which would be a, a new position that has not existed in the Legal Division, at, at least in recent history. Presently, we have four full-time positions funded, with the additional positions, we would be at 4.75 for fiscal year 2026. So, getting into the proposed positions a little bit, I want to talk about first the law clerk position. So what this would look like would be a law student, current law student, working primarily hybrid or remote schedule, performing legal research, and assistance on larger long-term projects that we have and, and that we are intending to undertake in the Legal Division. And the timeframe for this would likely be late summer, early fall, to correspond with the beginning of the academic year, and then continue throughout the school year, and hopefully into the summer as well. We have a number of things in queue that we've had difficulty getting to, things like updating city code provisions that are outdated or need, you know, rightsizing, longer, larger research projects that just simply have been difficult to get to, and those are the domain of a law clerk that can spend and devote time to those longer-term research projects and provide support to the city attorney, as well as our outside counsel who functions as an assistant city attorney at this time. We also have, we've proposed a .5 FTE administrative assistant, as I referenced, and that would be primarily to provide administrative and clerical support to me as a city attorney, as well as our paralegal who functions as the city's FOIA officer. And that position, that paralegal position is almost entirely devoted to FOIA administration, coordinating that throughout the, the city organization, as well as a handful of other matters that are, take a significantly less of, of his time, but certainly there's a need there for some additional administrative assistance as well. File management, document management, scheduling, and calendar management on my behalf, as well as day-to-day communications, answering phones, and basic office support functions in the Legal Division, which have been needs. You'll note that I referenced another administrative assistant in our department, we have one other FTE, and that position, and that staff member is almost exclusively devoted to managing the caseload for the city's city court program, week to week and month to month, supporting our outside counsel who does city court prosecution work, as well as other minor civil litigation support. And so, her capacity to take on additional administrative support on my behalf is, is very limited at this time. So, for this additional .5 FTE, what we'd be looking at is a timeframe after we hire the law clerk, probably, I would say, late fall, early winter of 2025. I apologize, I put 2026 in here, fiscal year 2026, but calendar year 2025 for both of these positions. Sorry to be confusing there. And so, looking at these two positions, the law clerk position at .25 FTE would be about 10,765 per year, and the admin assistant position at a .5 would be about 41 and a half thousand annually, for a total of 52,361. And really, the, the takeaway here is, we believe these positions, these additions to our department, will enhance our ability to provide great customer service, both within the city organization and to outside stakeholders, enhance productivity on my behalf, as well as our paralegal, reducing administrative overhead tasks that I self-perform now, and allow me, freeing me up to provide more direct, more, more of my time directly to city attorney work. And then finally, just general responsiveness to legal services requests within the organization, as well as management of litigation and, and other outside matters. And so, with that, I will take questions.
Any questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Matt. And could you clarify, are all of the Legal Division positions currently filled?
So, the assistant city attorney, which is fully funded, is filled in the form of a, a contract with our outside counsel, who previously was a city attorney, Dave a contract with our outside counsel, who previously was a city attorney, Dave Westner, has continued to perform what I would, I would refer to in a de facto Assistant City Attorney role. He's providing legal services to us.
Well, that's interesting.
Under contract, at the present time. And then, the paralegal and administrative assistant are filled with, filled with in-house positions.
And you said the Administrative Assistant is kind of taken up with other roles. What about the Assistant City Attorney, if we had that actually funded as a one full-time in-house? Because it seems like it's currently not really filled as funded, right? You're not really getting one full-time Assistant City Attorney at this point with the contracted services, right?
I think we're getting equivalent services based upon the scope of work that we've agreed to. Much of the same work that the Assistant City Attorney was performing previously, aside from the city attorney work, plus some additional things he's managing, litigation he's managing for us, as well as all the city court prosecution, all of our tax objection matters, and several, several cases currently pending that are litigation-related. And then other things that we ask to do under the scope of the contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the phone?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jaya.
I was just gonna say, I don't at this time, but Matt, I may follow up with you later. The connection's a little fuzzy, so I appreciate having these slides, but I think I'm good, but I'm gonna review things when it's a little bit clearer, hopefully in the recording.
All right, thank you, Jaya. Mary Alice?
Yeah, so I was wondering, is the FOIA person in the Legal Division, or is that strictly out of the executive branch?
The, the position is in the Legal Division's budget, which is a, a portion of the overall executive department budget.
Okay, and Michelle's position?
Michelle's position is in the HR budget.
Okay, so this is purely for legal things, not related to HR or FOIA?
Yes, I would qualify the statement about FOIA by saying, I would expect there will be some administrative assistant work that relates to FOIA support.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
If I could just follow up on that line of Mary Alice's questions with, we're talking about the FOIA person, we're talking about Ross, right? Is he one of these four? You're saying he's not?
Ross is the paralegal, yes.
He is the paralegal there, okay. Thank you.
Any more? Therese?
Since Grace brought it up, okay, so, but Ross is our FOIA officer, so most of his time is spent doing FOIAs.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to ask, that, you want an additional part-time Administrative Assistant, right?
That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you put the salary back up for that position? Thanks. Okay, and the Law Clerk, you plan on them being like more of an intern type of thing? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just to be clear, that's not just salary, that's salary plus benefits for the admin assistant. There would be no benefits for the Law Clerk, but there would be for the half-time admin.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, does that, quick question, does that mean the Law Clerk is a contract, independent contractor, or is there?
No, we just, we just don't provide benefits such as health insurance at, for a quarter-time employee. So, the only, the only amount above the hourly rate of pay would be FICA.
Okay, thank you. Any more? All right, thank you, Matt. If you want to go ahead and transition into the update on the OSF departure?
That's right, I'm having to pull my second computer out for this presentation. Sorry, I have this in a, in a document here on my, on my laptop. So, last week, as you recall, there was public comment about OSF's recent announcement of their consolidation of medical facilities between their Champaign and Danville locations, significant changes to how they would function here in our community. And so, following council discussion around that and the requests that we follow up and make the city's position known regarding that decision by OSF, I did some research last week, made some phone calls, and was able to determine a couple of things. First, this process, the, the actions they wish to take require them to file an application for a permit with the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board. And as of late this afternoon, they've yet to do that. So, that's not, they've not taken official steps toward this announced action yet. We expect that they will do so in the coming weeks, and I'll explain why that is here in a moment. I was able to speak with the General Counsel for the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, who talked me through the process there and what to expect. And so, the first thing happens, once an application is filed, like I said, we, we expect that OSF will file an application to move forward with this. The board accepts the application, reviews it for completeness and sufficiency to move forward. So, there's an initial review period, I believe they said about five days, five to seven days, where the board reviews it. And then, once it's officially and formally accepted, the board will issue a notice of review and an opportunity for public hearing. That notice would get published, and within 10 days of that notice, anyone, anyone can request a public hearing. And typically, with actions like what's being proposed, those public hearings are requested and they take place. And so, we would expect that to occur in this case. That could be the city that requested, it could be a private resident. The public hearings are in-person, they happen in the community where the action is proposed. They take place in a public forum that can accommodate the expected turnout. They essentially have a public hearing, much like what we had tonight on Budget. They hear from the public, either in writing or via live comment. Those are recorded and transcribed, and they become part of the official record of proceeding for the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, then when they consider the permit application finally. The window of time for that permit application review, unlike some of the information we received last week, is likely to be 120 days and not within a week. And so, it'll be a longer process. The board will review all the evidence and all of the data related to this, and then make a final decision. And so, what we're gonna do moving forward is continue to monitor the Health Facilities and Services Review Board website for the filings that have occurred recently until we, we see this one. We'll track its status, and we'll update council as we go along, as to actions that the city can take, and, you know, taking a, a formal position and going on record related to the proposed action. Like I said, typically, these are 120-day windows of time. There's one limiting factor here, and that is the fact that Health, Health Facilities and Services Review Board does not meet after their November 8th meeting of this year. And so, in order to have a review occur in this calendar year, the permit application would have to be submitted before July, I think 7th or 8th is the date that they gave me. So, we would expect this to come, this to come here in the next three weeks or so, but we'll continue to monitor and update council when that actually occurs. I'll take questions.
All right, what are the questions? Therese?
Since OSF is in my board, my question is, can I, or would it be the city that requests a public hearing for them to answer for why they're closing, or is there any, also, is there any, is there any action that can be taken to make them not close?
I think the, so the answer to your first question is yes and yes. So, you, you individually could request a public hearing, one of your constituents could, the city council as a public body could do that formally in a, in a joint statement. I expect there'll probably be a number of requests for public hearing, and if the General Counsel's experience holds true, that's likely to be the case here. I would also say, just, one thing she mentioned to me is that OSF is presently doing, more or less what they're proposing to do here, consolidation of facilities in LaSalle County, Illinois. So, between their Ottawa and LaSalle Peru or LaSalle Hospital locations, they're doing the same thing, and they're going through this process. They just had a public hearing last week, and there's a lot of opposition there. And they're expected to request a deferral for up to a year, in that case, is what the General Counsel is expecting in that, in that matter. So, kind of a parallel process that we can look at and learn from as this happens here.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So, just to clarify, deferral means slow down the process as opposed to stop it?
My understanding is, yeah, they would, they would essentially be asking the Health Facilities and Services Review Board to allow them additional time. I don't know what, what all happens during that period of time, but it, it doesn't withdraw the application, as I understand it, but it extends the window of time for review. And so, they may, they may amend their plan, they may proceed as planned after a year, but it delays the, the window of time for that to take place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the phone?
This is Jay again. I, I think it seems like the audio may be getting a little bit worse. So, again, appreciate the presentation, but we may have to follow up at a later date.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Next up, Police Staffing Hiring Incentives and Additional allocations. While we are getting our next group up there, I want to ask the clerk, what was the outcome of the inquiries about continuing meetings? We're, we're approaching the 10:30 mark, so we'll have to extend if we're gonna get more done tonight after this presentation. Was there opportunity this week to continue this meeting too, if we don't get everything done?
Yeah, I believe the evenings of Wednesday and Tuesday were, were best for everyone. Is that correct?
We sent in our info. What's the clerk office? What did they determine?
So, I don't have it off the top of my head. I know I spoke with Elizabeth regarding this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's hope we can get through most of this.
So, the, the mayor's unavailable anytime after tomorrow night. He will be out of town. And so, I feel like he should be here to discuss his proposed budget.
So, if we run out of time tonight, we're going to recess and continue to tomorrow at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, we don't have a choice.
I'm just asking right now because when we run out of time, I want to make sure we kind of know what we're doing.
That's fine, yeah.
Anybody have an objection to that?
I will not be able to attend if it continues tomorrow. I'm out of state with other obligations. But I, I do understand prioritizing the mayor's schedule, and this will not be final action, but I would like to make my position clear in terms of the budget, if we're not going to take action on that tonight.
Okay. We'll see how we can do there, Jaya. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right, Chief Boone, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you all for allowing myself and Deputy Chief Smizer to present to you. This certainly is a passionate topic. I heard from our constituents, and, and, and most of them have some very valid points. I've always said, we don't want to send badges and guns to mental health crisis, for the most part. There are cases where officers are needed, you know? One of the young ladies spoke to people living in deplorable conditions, and I witnessed that myself. There is machinery as a city to address stuff like that. I agree with that. But also, there's room and a space for police. We recently sent a group of officers to Chicago to highlight what working with community looks like by way of the Community Engagement Team, and much to their chagrin, I should say, they were surprised to learn that so many people do this model. It's not unique. It's been around a very, very long time, and it can be very effective. You know, I heard a lot of talks about vacancies. People want to come here. Myself and Chief Smizer, we interview people weekly. In fact, we're fully staffed. Our challenge is, once they're here, after about two or three years, due to some things they may read in the paper or hear in the media, they, they want to leave. In addition to that, we're not adequately staffed. If they're not adequately staffed, this generation values a work-life balance. They're not interested in overtime. And that's kind of how we've been managing it through overtime. You know, I've said before, I start from a position of prevention first. That's how I look through the lens of 21st century policing. Secondly, intervention. And lastly, lastly, enforcement. Prevention, intervention, that's a partnership, and those things can be done. You heard folks say that police don't stop crime. That's not factual. 1990s, through actionable partnerships with community and data, crime in this country saw the most decrease it's ever seen. And we know how that model looks. And one of the reasons why we want a substation in that particular area is based on data. My first couple of weeks here, when I heard of Walter and Solder, Solder, I should say, I had heard about it enough, but never put my eyes on it. And my experience told me what that would look like. And when, at the time Deputy Chief Searls took me there, it looked exactly like I imagined. High weeds, children walking the street unclothed to some degree, trash cans running over, surrounded by drug paraphernalia, and vacant eyes that seem to have lost hope by those living there. We can do both, folks. We can make our department healthy so that folks want to stay, so we don't work them like a rented mule. And we can also address the needs that are real in certain communities. Let's go with it. All right, so this is a structure of our current police department. We have the Patrol Branch, that's oversaw, seen rather, by the Deputy Chief of Operations. We should have three deputy chiefs, but we understand that it costs. So, we're trying to make this structure work with two deputy chiefs. Unfortunately, the senior deputy chief has to carry the bulk in overseeing criminal investigation, as well as administration. Now, the colors you see highlighted on the structure there, the pink indicates positions approved in fiscal year '25. But we hadn't been able to realize those positions yet, just to, what I said earlier, we cannot retain our folks. When people leave, I try to make you all aware through email communication so that you see what's happening in real time. The yellow represents what we're currently asking for this fiscal year. That's an additional three officers and a Community Engagement Sergeant, just to put us at the bare minimum. Next, please. So, the cost for the three sworn patrol officers- So the cost for the three sworn patrol officers is $367,000, which is salary and benefits. The one-time startup cost is a little over $200,000. The police training institute costs $8,177 per officer. This cost is reimbursed to the general funds. Necessary equipment is simply hardware, radios, guns, body-on camera, things of that nature. Expanding the fleet will require two vehicles for three sworn. That does not include our community engagement team. We appreciate your efforts last fiscal year. You took care of that and we now have a vehicle for that unit. Additional training after PTI. In order to stay current with 21st century policing best practices, we have to send officers to training. It's not merely going to PTI and that's the end of it. New sworn personnel officers are essential to maintaining adequate staffing levels to ensure officer safety, reduce overtime costs. I know that's going to come up and we will try to really make that crystal clear. Improved response times for calls for service allows the department to transition staff to other necessarily necessary roles. And lastly, this is merely to get us to minimum staffing. Next. So the community engagement sergeant, the annual cost is $150,000. We're basing that on, if approved, this will probably be one of our more senior sergeants with about eight years of experience so that we can ensure that span of control is properly managed. As you know, this is a three-year pilot program, expected to continue through FYI 2028. I'm sorry. As I already noted, two police officer positions were approved for community engagement team in fiscal year '25. We still have not been able to realize those positions due to the things I previously said. And the community engagement team requires supervision. As I just stated that, it's important that the model we have is consistent with best practices. Every community engagement team that I'm aware of has a corporal or a sergeant and anywhere from one to eight officers. I think Bloomington has one sergeant and three officers and they've had their community engagement team running for some time now. So, next.
So the $112,500 would extend the police hiring incentives that are currently in place. So this would be a continuation of a program that we have used to bring officers onboard. As Chief Boone has noted, it has been successful in bringing them onboard. Our issues lie with retention, not so much recruiting. It does help us remain competitive in getting the new people onboard. But as we note, the challenges do remain with retention. And this is an overview of the officers we have lost since the beginning of 2024. And that includes the three at the very bottom. The one with three years of experience is actually leaving tomorrow, will be his last day. But for the briefest of moments, we are fully staffed. We have persons slotted in every position currently within the department. But however, as we've talked about in previous conversations, that includes four persons who we are currently in a background investigation process, so they're not even onboard yet. They are filling a role at the department, but they're not yet been, they're in the conditional offer phase, so they're not yet on payroll. That includes four that are currently attending the police training institute. I believe they're starting week seven of '16. And four who are currently in our field training process here at the department. So they are still being trained. So we're currently fully staffed with 63, but that includes 12 of those who are in either a background process or some portion of training. And with that, we wanted to keep ours short. We presume there will be a few questions.
All right, Therese.
Did you go back to the showing the numbers? Because I'm, nope, nope.
I'm sorry.
No, no. Where, how many people left?
The years.
Okay, because my main question is this, because I see like someone was here for one year. And am I wrong to assume that I'd say from one to seven years, they were patrol officers?
No, that'd be a pretty safe assumption.
Okay.
It's, there's potential, a couple of them were newly, I'm trying to think back on the people that left. I think the ones that were sergeants were previous to 2024.
Okay, so.
No, one was sergeant.
One of the seven years was a sergeant?
Yeah, it might have been the nine year, but somewhere around there.
Okay. Because I'm just looking at the one, it's 15 people. It's 15 that I counted on there, I think. And so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of them were between one and seven years. And that just doesn't leave a lot of, I mean, that means that that's not a whole lot of experience. That's the one thing. The other thing I was looking at is that our most experienced, and I'm sure one of these is probably Chief Searls, that retired. So we have an 11-year person that resigned, a nine-year that went to another police department. And then we have a 27 and a 25 and a 20 that retired, which would be the people that would be training or experienced enough to possibly, I'm thinking, train or rabbi, some of the younger officers.
Yes and no. Typically, when people get to that age or that step in their career, myself, I'm, next week will be 24 years. I'm well past the training phase of my career, other than, you know, throwing a little piece of wisdom out here or there when I can. So for most people.
We don't have captains, we don't have corporals, we don't have majors, we don't have those steps within our police force. We have patrol officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and then you jump up to chief, basically. So that's why I was asking and, well, stating in some ways that the, you could be a lieutenant and you'll end up like maybe being someone's rabbi when they come back, when they come in. How many, how many training officers do we have?
That's a good question. It's something we were talking about in staff meeting today. I think currently, training officer, our field training officers, I believe, Lieutenant spoke and said, seven is what we're currently sitting at. And that's going to turn into an issue. And when we talk about, and when we've previously spoke about, the number of people that we can onboard at any given time. So we have found that four is really our maximum capacity, just due to simply not having enough training officers available to them. We've thought about trying five, but we're concerned and worried that we wouldn't be able to provide them with a level of training that we will feel, would feel as necessary to get them up to the standard that we would expect out of them. So we currently have seven. We need more. We are going to send more to training to become a field training officer. It turns into an issue when you're losing those people from, you know, three to seven years on. Those are typically the people who are field training officers or who have been here long enough to really know what they're doing, well enough to train new people as they come out of the academy. And so it is, our average tenure for our field training cadre is getting lower, which has potential to be, it's something we need to keep an eye on and we do.
Sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt this discussion to ask for a motion to extend and a time that we're going to extend to.
Move to extend to 11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the meeting till 11 o'clock and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Therese, you can continue.
Okay, I just wanted to get an understanding as to, because this is just two years of folks, actually, it's just one year of folks gone. So I just wanted to get an understanding as to how many positions are presently vacant, for sure?
None right.
None right now, but we will have one tomorrow.
Okay.
And then two more following very shortly.
Okay, so we'll be adding two more people to this list, basically, or they already on there?
We will definitely be adding three more people to this list for 2025.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, next, next person, Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. My first question was also curious about the vacancies. What about the community engagement? Don't we have those two positions unfilled still?
Those positions are slotted. We have persons in those spots. We don't, we have not stood up the team based on the needs of the patrol division and the fact that of those dozen people that we have in training, we are right on the precipice of putting people into those spots, if that makes sense.
Not quite. I think it would be helpful if we could have a little bit more of, something in writing, because it's hard just auditorily to hear four in training, four in field training, these ones that need to be moved up. Also, same with a social worker, do we have the social worker position that was added from last year filled?
Yes, we did have another block on this slide that we decided to take out because otherwise it was very small and you couldn't see the writing, so we had to expand it. But we have an overall of all of our civilian positions and that position has been filled.
And what about the deputy chiefs? Do we have an interim for the second deputy? Could you refresh our memory?
No.
So that's a vacancy, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like some more concrete information on what the vacancies in the department are.
So the current positions that are vacant within the department, all of those positions are being held at the patrol level. So there are people in every role. But a big sticking point has been getting sergeant's test up and running. We've been working with human resources. That process is in, in progress. We hope to have that done and completed sometime in August. When that is finished, we will have a number of vacancies within the department as far as positions are concerned, but are currently filled by officers. So we will move people up into those empty ranks as they are, as the sergeant's test is really completed and filled.
So, so look at it as specialty positions, community resource off, I'm sorry, community engagement officers, deputy chiefs. We are fully staffed by our authorized strength, 63. But we don't have folks currently filling those positions as of yet because we don't have the flexibility by way of manpower to proceed further. That's a portion of it. The other portion of it is, we have to set up some promotional processes that are coming. But we're authorized 63. We have a but in each seat for 63 for now until tomorrow, and then the following weeks we'll lose two more. But we are in the process of adding a deputy chief as well as selecting training sergeant, the community engagement folks.
And are you saying some of your new people in training will backfill those patrol positions?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know if.
But that's part of the 63 too. Just 63, that's all we have. There's no other folks out there, 63. We're going to lose one tomorrow and additional two.
So I don't know if anyone else at a later time, or if you can have some other way of explaining this that makes a little more sense, possibly with visuals would be helpful. Thank you.
Anybody on the phone have a question?
Yeah, I do. So this is, this is Jaya. So I remember, I think it might have been last year with the budget conversation, there was information about surveys that were being collected related to, to the turnover, the retention issue. I guess I would be curious of, do we have that information that can be shared? And I hear that question, concern about retention of officers. I don't feel comfortable attributing it to budget-related topics without evidence to support that. I know Chief Boone is really big on data and I'd really like to see that information that, at least previously, my understanding was being collected of what is contributing to people leaving our department. I know that there has been a big push and we've been seeing a good response to the recruitment efforts. And I know we have some fantastic officers in our police department. I think it is difficult, for me at least, to say what the need is when we haven't had a stable year of staffing and in order to be able to make any kind of determination about what feels appropriate, I would like more information. So I guess my question is, are you still collecting that survey data as people are leaving the department? And if so, can you get that information to us as we're making this decision?
So when we started to have folks leaving, one of the things I wanted to do is find out why. And we asked what some of them provide information. It wasn't mandatory. Some did provide information, some didn't. But I understand what you all are saying, but I will simply just remind you, we hired a professional organization to do a staffing study. And in the interest of time, page 18, 115, and 116, they made their recommendation and they provided the data as to why. So let's not move the goalposts. That's, that's been signed, sealed, and delivered.
So I'm sorry, having a little bit of trouble hearing you. I think you're referring to the Barry Dunn study. And I do want to clarify, that is not what I asked for from that study. I asked for a review of alternate response models, which we still have not gotten. So I hear what you're saying, that there's information there. I think it's not complete information because we're yet to receive the product that we've requested. So I do want to clarify, I object to saying moving the goalposts. What I'm asking from you is if there is information that would help us in making this decision. I appreciate that you're asking for what you feel is needed for your department. I think that's appropriate for any department head. We have to look at the needs of the city as a whole. And I think having the data to make a complete decision is important, as you're always mentioning to us. So yes, like I said, it was a little bit fuzzy for part of it, but what I'm asking is if you have that data related to staff who have left our police department as to what is contributing to that, and if you can provide that to us before the final budget vote next week.
Sure. Again, just to calibrate it, I asked folks if they would provide information. Some did, some didn't. But I will ensure that you get that information unfiltered.
Thank you.
All right, Chris?
Yeah, I think it's also important that not only not move the goalposts, but not half-truth spin either. I read those page numbers and let's be clear, Barry Dunn said seven. Barry Dunn said seven sworn police officers and six non-sworn community responders. Six non-sworn, basically the non, the alternative response. So it's not 13 police officers, it's seven with six non-sworn. So that's, that's, let's make that clear.
Grace?
I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, go to your...
No, I think we're saying the same things, Mr. Evans. One caveat, Barry Dunn did not consider the community engagement folk. They were just talking about bare minimum staffing for patrol.
All right, Grace, go ahead.
Do you have an official written plan for the community engagement program?
Yes.
Could we see it?
Yes.
Why hasn't that been shared with the council or public before now? Especially when the positions have been funded for the past year?
Well, it wasn't complete. It's complete.
We need to know that before we allocate over a million dollars a year for that program. So I think that would be important for council, please.
And I understand that, but first of all, these are merely officers with a special trait. I've written an SOP and I've written a policy as to their job responsibilities, to include the sergeant's job responsibilities as well as the officers, to include a policy so that you get a better idea of what they do. And I would suggest that all of you, research other departments as to what their community engagement teams do. There's a lot of information out there.
And we would appreciate it. And so far, there has been none given to council. For the years that this program has been requested, there's been zero official information presented to council or the public about this program would do. And that is absolutely necessary. So I would appreciate if you could send that over and make that public as soon as possible.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else on the phone have a question? Before I go back to Chris?
Yeah, I actually have two questions. My first question is, is just kind of building upon what Grace and Sharice were asking. There's a bit of a domino effect, right? So the deputy chief and the community officers and then the field training officers and so forth and so forth. It would be really helpful to me to have it all written down in terms of the number, I think you said four people were in training, if I remember correctly. And I believe they're in training for a year before they're considered out of training. So it would be good to have kind of a timeline with what those positions are going to be and then what needs to be backfilled for me to fully understand what's going on here. And then my second question is, I know that there is a request to keep the incentives. My request is to know how many of those incentives have been used already? And what has been the success rate?
I'm gonna, so, sorry. What we don't know is how many of those officers would not have come here without the incentive. So I think it's really hard to say a success rate, but certainly we can tell you how many incentives we've paid since we started this and it's been a couple of years now.
Yes, that would be helpful.
All right, Chris?
But Elizabeth, I remember the November 14th, 2022 allocation for the bonuses and the retention incentives and all that. And at the time, it came to 1.3 million over three years. Have we burned through 1.3 million already?
I'd have to kind of backtrack and check that, but yes, it's, it's possible.
But you're saying it's possible to, to track every payment, or is that right?
Yes, yeah, it all runs, it all runs through a particular account in the general ledger, so it is possible to track it. So initially, included in that large amount were the retention incentives for existing officers, right? And once all the existing officers got those retention incentives, they already had those and then everybody was coming in as a new officer and they were getting the hiring incentives. So that, initially, it was a very large amount, yeah.
All right, Grace?
Along those lines, if you're saying that it's harder to retain than hire new officers, why isn't the incentive going more towards retention than hiring?
Well, it's a conversation that we've had internally. We've done two rounds of retention bonuses. Retention bonuses are extremely expensive, because it's for everyone that's currently on the department, as opposed to paying one-off, smaller bonuses as we bring people on one at a time. So, 60 people on staff, $10,000 of retention bonuses, $600,000 versus hiring one new officer every two months at $5,000 per. It's monetary.
Makes sense, but why not apply the retention just to new hires? So like when you're new hire and then after those three years, you get this retention bonus. Not everyone who's already on staff who already got those retention bonuses, but kind of like grandfathered in retention bonuses for those who missed out. So instead of saying hiring bonus upfront, we're gonna give you this $5,000, why not delay it with retention like we did previously? And say after three years of service with Urbana, you get that? If retention is our issue more than hiring?
So, so I think we could examine that. Partly, we have a need to, we have competition here in the local area, right? That is offering incentives. And so, it's hard, it's hard to know what an individual person wants when they come on board. But some people are thinking, okay, maybe I'm gonna relocate to Urbana and become a police officer. I need a little money to help, help with the down payment on the house. Some people might have a preference to get it earlier. Most people would probably take it now versus later, if they could. But we can look at the structure of that.
Yeah, they could, but we're looking out for also the people of Urbana. And if we're gonna continue to hire and have issues with retaining officers, it seems like if we're gonna spend people's tax money on that issue, it would make sense to target it towards the issue of retention rather than hiring. So just a thought, if there's any ways we could incorporate that.
I understand. We have to get them here first before we can retain them. But I understand what you're saying.
All right, any other questions? I do have one. The 112,500 for retention, what's that translate into?
It's not retention, it's hiring.
Oh, hiring, sorry. I have retention on the brain now. What does that translate into? It doesn't, it doesn't...
No, yeah.
It's not divisible by 5,000, so I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
It was based on what we, what we expected in terms of turnover, but I don't have the math in front of me, so I will have to check.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
Can I get a recap of what everybody wanted? You want policies. I couldn't quite understand the folks on the phone.
Jaya, I think they both wanted a more visual indicator of how the 63 translates into the org chart that we're talking about. What I seem to understand from that is that there are patrol officers that have not yet moved to be a sergeant or sergeants that have not yet moved to be another position. But that's not clear from the base number to what the picture looks like. And so if there was something a little more visual about where people are and where they're going, I think that would help explain that. Jaya, did you want something else? Or did that cover that?
So I think, sorry again, the connection's a little rough tonight. I think what I heard you were asking about is part of what I was mentioning, but also just any data that we do have available from the exit interviews to help us, yeah, help us better understand the retention challenges. That would be very helpful as well. And I think it kind of relates to some of the questions that Grace brought up as well.
Okay, got it. I neglected that second part there. Chief's got it now.
Thank you.
Yes, and the community engagement information in that policy?
That's the policy.
So...
Just to, just to add for your list. And they're recorded, too, if you need to go back and recap the discussion.
There are descriptions, sergeants, community engagement, and a policy as to what the community engagement team will be doing. No?
I don't think that encompassed everything, but I think we've said it quite a few times and it's back in the meeting to re-watch, too, if you need to.
I want to get this right.
That's what I heard.
There has it.
Okay, all right.
Since I have it here, I'll give you real quickly the math on the incentives. We expected 10, 10 new officers at 10,000 for new hires plus five 2,500 referral bonuses, which is part of the program.
Thank you, that explains it. All right, yes?
Oh, I also believe council requested, I think it was the exit interviews?
Yeah, that's the survey, yeah. Thank you.
I was just gonna add one more thing as far as like the whole thing with the positions. Maybe a list of what the positions are, how many are in, something like that, instead of the org chart. The org chart can be kind of, you know, if you don't know what the stuff is in the first place, that's my, that's my only issue. Just make a list saying, this is how many patrol officers we have, this is how many lieutenants we have, sergeants, unsworn people, you know, however that works.
Okay, Elizabeth?
So, there is in the back of the budget book, there's a list of all the budgeted positions that goes, goes by org code in the budget. So that might, that might give you what you're looking for, but if it doesn't, I'm sure we could produce something different.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we made it through section E. We've got about 10 minutes. We're gonna start into new business and see how far we can get. First item of new business is Resolution Number 2025-06-039R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for the low-income home energy assistance program, LIHEEP. Who is presenting on this? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So, this resolution would express the council's support for the LIHEEP program. In program year 2025, 2,296 Urbana households received about 1.7 million in utility assistance through LIHEEP. If council approves this, the mayor's office will send copies to the President of the United States, members of the Illinois Congressional Delegation, and other federal agencies and appropriations committees.
Any questions? Yes, Sharice?
This is the program that would go through the whole summer? And we're gonna, we're going to fund, the city will fund the entire thing?
This is just a request to, for them to continue the program.
Yeah, basically, this is city, city council saying, we, we support this program. We want all of our legislators to know that.
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you. I was trying to figure out, okay.
It's showing solidarity for this. Chandra?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-06-039R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for the low-income home energy assistance program, LIHEEP.
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? People on the phone first this time?
No, I don't have any discussion other than to say that I'm in full support of this.
Ditto.
All right, Grace?
I was just gonna say the same, support this resolution and I really appreciate the new mayor and the executive for bringing this up proactively. It's very refreshing that we can make a statement in support of something really important for our community and we don't have to fight about the right to do that locally. So thank you very much.
All right, any other comments? Don't see any. This is committee of the whole, this is a resolution, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2025-06-040R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for Head Start.
So, similar to the last resolution, again, this is asking the council to express their support for the Head Start program, which serves over 500 children and families each year in Champaign County. This is another program that's administered by the Regional Planning Commission. And again, if council approves this, the mayor's office would send copies of the resolution to the president and various legislators to let them know that the Urbana City Council supports this program.
All right, any...
I make a motion for Resolution Number 2025-06-040R, a resolution in full support of full federal funding for Head Start.
Be, Sharice?
Send on to the city council for approval.
Second.
Seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Grace. Grace, beat you to it, Mayor Alice. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Grace?
Just another, thank you for the support on this and proactively. Definitely personally support and experienced Head Start here in Urbana and the importance for early childhood development and education and family support, especially for low-income families. And so really appreciate this and I hope that these things aren't cut the way that they're threatened to be. So, thanks for doing what we can here.
Any other comments?
Rafael?
Yes?
Is this for the regular or consent agenda? It wasn't specified.
I heard consent.
Consent?
I would re-second it if it wasn't clear the first time.
I heard Sharice say that, actually.
Consent agenda, for consent agenda, and Grace can second it?
All right, you ready to vote?
Yeah, I, I did want to say something really quickly, James, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So this, I'm on the Regional Planning Commission and Head Start is a program run by that commission. And they actively work very hard to be able to serve the kids in that program. And it's a big component of RPC. And so I'm full support of, of asking the federal government to continue this.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously. We are four minutes away from our next deadline. I would, I would say that this is the point at which we should determine whether we're going to extend further or whether we're going to recess until 7 o'clock tomorrow. Mayor, what's your pleasure?
I...
I say let's recess for tomorrow.
Do I need a motion to recess till tomorrow at 7 o'clock as chair?
Yes, you need a motion, second and a vote.
Okay.
I believe so.
I'm just gonna clarify, are we talking about tomorrow at 7:00 PM?
Yes, so we need to specify that we are reconvening in council chambers, that it's for tomorrow at 7:00 PM and we're picking up exactly where we left off.
I can try. Okay, I move that we recess this meeting for now and reconvene in council chambers here tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second with the...
I'll second.
Chandra, you were, you were seconding?
With the addition of picking up where we left off.
Yep. All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion before we vote?
Um, I'd just like to make a comment again, since I will not be able to attend...
Yeah, go ahead, Jaya. Go ahead, Jaya, this is your chance.
Yep, just to say, since I will not be able to attend tomorrow, I might try to draft something and send it in or something. I think the budget conversation is really important. And I regret not being able to be part of a further discussion on that item. I think having the presentations was really helpful. My concerns about any expansion of the police department without actually doing alternate response process that we've been promising our community for over four years remain the same as last year. process that we've been promising our community for over four years remain the same as last year. I do support making sure that we are being competitive in terms of any recruitment or retention bonuses that we need to consider. And I also want us to be really mindful about if we are continuing the grocery tax that it is to make sure that we have the funds available to support the most vulnerable members of our community, and not to fund additional police positions. So, that's, that's my quick nutshell version. I know we're almost out of time, I'll try to provide additional feedback if I'm, if I'm able to do so. But, can't be there.
Thank you, Jaya. All right, I'm gonna call a vote before we run out of time. All those in favor of the motion to recess and reconvene tomorrow at 7:00 PM to continue where we left off, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, say nay? We are in recess.